I call this special meeting of the City Council of Etasquita to order and I will ask Councilmember Daras to lead us in a pledge to the flag.
Please start him over your heart, it's like, there you go, there's the flag, thank you Susan, all right. And begin, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all.
Thank you, Councilmember Daras, roll call please.
Councilmember Warbo.
Here.
Councilmember Daras.
Here.
Councilmember Funk.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tem Newsom.
Mayor Moreno.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Well, if you're watching or listening to our special city council meeting tonight, we welcome you. And if you would like to speak during public comment for this item that's on the agenda, you can call 805-538-2888 to provide public comment via phone. And if you're on the webinar, you will be able to do that tonight by raising your hand when the time comes. Once again, the phone number is 805-538-2888. So we are on to our one public hearing this evening, which is the Appeal of the Dove Creek Mini Storage. And I would like to ask our city attorney, Mr. Perick, if you have anything that you wanted to start us off with.
Yes, I do, Mayor. Can you hear me okay?
It's fine, thank you.
Yes, I wanted to let the council know that I received a letter dated June 1st of 2021 from Kate Nieswinder. She's the attorney for the applicant. I prepared a supplemental staff report, which was posted yesterday with my analysis of the letter from Ms. Nieswinder. It includes a discussion of the points that she made in her letter, also includes my legal analysis. The report itself is eight pages long and with attachments, it's 36 pages, so I certainly don't intend to read it all. But I am going to summarize a few of the key points. It is there in the record, however, if anybody wishes to look at it. What Ms. Nieswinder says in her letter is that she is requesting that Mayor Pro Tem Newsom and that Councilmember Funk recuse themselves from participating in this appeal on the ground that they are biased against the applicant and this project. So I did a review of the points that she made with regards to this alleged bias. And it's my conclusion that there is no bias which would prevent either Mayor Pro Tem Newsom or Councilmember Funk or any other council member from participating in the hearing on this appeal. A few of the key points that I'll mention are the fact that there was a prior project, which you may hear about, that was submitted by the applicant. It was acted upon by the planning commission. It was appealed to the council and the hearing on that appeal was in September of 2019. Then later in January of 2020, there was a proceeding before the city council on January 28th of 2020. And at that time, one of the items under consideration by the council was an ordinance that would have amended the city's code to preclude mini storage projects from being authorized for a P-zone. Notably, the council voted three to two to allow the mini storage facilities to remain in the P-zone. And voting in favor at that time were Mayor Moreno, Heather Newsom, and Susan Funk. So there was an opportunity had Mayor Pro Tem Newsom or Councilmember Funk wished to take an action that would have prevented the mini storage from being allowed in the P-zone, they could have voted to not allow the mini storage to continue, but in fact, they voted to allow mini storage to remain in the P-zone. So I think that that's certainly relevant evidence. Another event that I mentioned in the report was the November 18th of 2020, meeting of the Design Review Committee. And that's addressed in my report. At that meeting, there was a vote to approve the project concept design to include public assembly and mini storage. And that the committee was in agreement that the design and land use is compatible with the general plan policy. That motion was passed by the DRC by a vote of three to one. Those voting in favor were Dwayne Anderson, Emily Baranek, and the reported case was Councilmember Mark Daras, who at that time was a planning commissioner. And one no vote was by, I indicated in the report, Mayor Pro Tem Heather Newsom, who at that time did not have that title, she was a council member. So that was the vote at the DRC that is mentioned in the letter from Ms. Nieswinder. And as I indicate in the report, the fact that Mayor Pro Tem Newsom voted against that motion is not a basis to disqualify her on the ground of bias. Now, I also point out that the letter from this Nieswinder does not seek to disqualify on the ground of bias. Mark Diaz, Daras, for his vote in favor of the project, Nor Charles Borbo for his votes that were favorable to the project previously. She's only seeking to disqualify on the grounds of bias, the two council members who I've mentioned. So I'm going to defer to the report for the rest of the analysis, because as I said, it is quite lengthy. But there is one quote that I want to read. One of the points was made by Ms. Nieswinder was that Councilmember Funk had posted on her Facebook that she liked comments that were critical of the project. Well, that's just not true. The Facebook pages are attached to the report as attachment D. Those indicate only that Councilmember Funk liked those who said, "Thank you, Susan." There was no indication that they were critical of the project, so that's not a correct statement. But equally, if not more important, is that the YouTube on May 7th of 2021 that was posted by Councilmember Funk included a video in which she read from her appeal, which basically indicates that she felt that there was more information that was necessary to evaluate the project. And then there's this statement, which is not mentioned by Ms. Nieswinder, but I'm going to mention it. And this is on the video. And I'm quoting now Councilmember Funk. Quote, "As council members, we are required to be open to all matters and not to make our decision before we have heard the full hearing and have everybody's comments." That's what the public process of public hearings is for, so that we can all have that information and everybody gets to have their say before the council makes a decision. And I very definitely am honoring that commitment and look forward to getting a picture that'll help. Maybe it'll help some of the rest of you, but certainly will help me in understanding the project. So Councilmember Funk there confirms that she will consider the information that is presented as part of the public process. That's, in my opinion, further evidence that she is not biased. As I mentioned, I've already concluded that Mayor Pro Tem Newsom, that the claims of bias against her are without merit for the reasons I've described in the report. So what I want to do now is make this statement that every member on the council has at one time or another made a comment or a statement or a vote with regards to either to the prior project, the one that was addressed in 2019, or their current project that was filed in 2020. And what I want to do is ask you each, whether or not, notwithstanding whatever statements you may have made in the past or comments you may have made or votes you may have made in the past, whether or not tonight, you can be fair and impartial and evaluate the appeal on its merits based upon the staff report that you've been presented, based upon the public comments that you receive, either that have been written or they might receive orally tonight, based upon responses to the questions you received tonight, and based upon your deliberations. So if you can indicate to me, I'm going to ask each of you that same question. When I'm going to ask you whether you can be fair and impartial, that's what I mean by whether you can be fair and impartial, namely to judge this appeal based on what you have read in preparation for the meeting tonight. And that you will keep an open mind until all of the evidence is in and you begin your deliberations. And after you've completed your deliberations, to do so in an impartial manner. So we're going to start with Councilmember Funk. My question to you is, Councilmember Funk, can you be fair and impartial and judge this appeal based on what you hear this evening and what you will you hear tonight and the evidence has been presented?
Yes.
Okay, then Mayor Pro Tem Newsom, same question, are you going to be fair and impartial tonight and consider the evidence that's presented to you tonight and whatever public comments are presented in the deliberations?
Yes.
All right, Councilmember Daras, same question to you, are you going to be fair and impartial tonight and judge the matter based upon what's been presented to you this evening and what your considerations are and evaluations tonight?
Yes, I will.
Councilmember Borbo, I have the same question for you. You've heard it three times now, so should be getting pretty good out of it by now. But the question is, and I want you to give it your independent thought, not, and I want you to answer yes, just because that's been the answer that others have given. I want it to be an answer that you evaluate based on your own independent feelings and judgments on this. So here's the question again, will you be fair and impartial based upon the evidence that's been presented to both sides, both the applicant and either in favor or against the project, so that you're fair, that you're impartial, and that you've not prejudged this project and you're going to consider it on its merits tonight? Can you do that?
Yes, I can.
Okay. And then finally, Mayor Moreno, the similar question for you. Will you be able to exercise your independent judgment tonight, notwithstanding any statements or votes or comments that you may have made previously, and evaluate the merits of the appeal as this is being presented to you tonight and be fair and impartial both on both issues with respect to the project or in favor or against the project, that you'd be fair and impartial in evaluating the project on its merits?
I can and I will, yes.
So that's all I have to say on this, and I'll just conclude by noting that the staff report that I mentioned is in the record, certainly has more detail, but I'm not going to spend the next three hours going through all of it. I think I've covered the highlights though, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perick. As we get started, I'm going to ask my fellow council members for any ex parte. And this is where we disclose to you, the public, any conversations we have had outside of this public process that could affect our deliberations that are vote this evening. And so I'm just going to go Hollywood Squares style through the pictures on my screen, so we'll start with Councilmember Funk.
Yes, I have ex parte to disclose. I met at length with Frances Romero, who represents the applicant, and obtained information from her in response to my questions that included the heights of the buildings and various other project information that do contribute to my understanding of the project. I will do my best to ask questions of staff or the applicant to put anything on public record that might not otherwise be there, that contributed to my understanding. I also had a meeting with Max Zappus, who supports the project. I had short phone calls with V. Pearson, Michael Latner, who opposed the project. I consulted my archived calendar to identify what public and private events I attended in September of 2019 in response to the client, the applicant's lawyer's letter that the, on issues that the city attorney has addressed. I did have an extended site visit. I've done a couple of site visits, but I had an extended site visit on Sunday. Spent time visualizing the project in C2. I have read posts on Facebook. And I have observed and taken photos of other situations where there are wrought iron fences in the context of building and landscapes, including the Passerables Event Center when I went to get my COVID vaccination. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Daras.
Yeah, just a brief conversation with the applicant. He called me this afternoon. Apparently, there was a question from another council member on the roof line. And just wanted to talk to me about changes that he's might be proposing. We might see them tonight on just more variation in the roof because of the long buildings and whatnot, but that was the extent of our conversation on the project.
And that's all for ex parte?
That's all I got for ex parte, yes.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Newsom.
I have spoke with several community members for and against the project.
Thank you. Councilmember Warbo.
Yes, I had a long conversation with Clyde Snyder, who was an opponent of the project. I had a, I had a long conversation with Frances Romero, the applicant's representative. As part of that conversation, I asked a couple of questions. One about the height of the dome house and one about the roof, long roof line that Councilmember Daras referred to. And as a result of that conversation, she sent me emails that I have since forwarded to the clerk with some drawing, you know, images or whatever that, one of them, I think, was subsequently provided to the rest of council. But like Councilmember Funk, those kind of answered a question I had. I spoke, had a conversation with Josh Cross, who has subsequently written us a email opposing the project. I also had a conversation with Rex Hendricks, who used to own the entire Dove Creek area. And I was trying to check his memory banks. He's in his 90s of what the, what the property had been like over the years, the decades. I had, somewhere in the past, I had a conversation with Max Zappus, who, as you know, has written a letter in favor of the project. That was several months ago. And then in somewhere in the last couple of months, I've had a conversation with Zoe Zappus, who has also written us a letter in favor of the project. And today, I don't know how many times I've been to this site to look at things, but today I walked the site and I was at one point greeted by the person who lives in the dome house, the geodesic dome house. I don't recall his name, but I had a brief conversation with him as well. I think that's it.
Thank you. Prior to this appeal or even this, this project coming back, I had had conversations with the applicant, with Max Zappus, community members. In this, this iteration, other than the emails that we have all received, I haven't intentionally kept my communication and everything that I received through the public process. And it's not that either way is right or wrong. To me, you either open up and do everybody or you just keep it through the public process. And my intention with that was that everybody knew what I was getting, when I was getting it. And so therefore, I really have no ex parte to disclose tonight. Yes, Councilmember Funk.
I missed one in my list as I was going through. I had conversations with Planning Commissioner Tori Keen, who was undecided about the project at the time that I first spoke with her on this. And she emailed me photographs that she had taken of the, a mini storage facility that the applicant has built in the Nipomo area that helped me, contributed to my visualizing the project and recognizing the need for additional information for my appeal.
Thank you. Councilmember Warbo.
Thank you for mentioning Planning Commissioners, Councilmember Funk. After the second Planning Commission vote on this project, I had a brief conversation with Jeff Van den Eyckhoff, the Chair of the Planning Commission.
Anything else?
I attended both Planning Commission meetings on this project.
All right, we're going a little overboard with ex parte, but sometimes we do that in situations like this, so you know absolutely everything. There we go. All right. So now let's move on to our presentation, and that will be by our Community Development Director, Mr. Phil Dunsmore.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, council. I'm going to give you some general background on the process and the project. And our senior planner, Kelly Leeson, is going to give you some finer details about the project itself and get into some of the discussion about what findings we need to make, whether we approve or deny the conditional use permit. This project, definitely, we've kind of seen this before. It was 2019 when we first looked at the conditional use permit at the Planning Commission. And then we had a city council appeal after that, and the city council then did overturn the Planning Commission decision and deny the project at that time. Then we received a resumé of essentially a new project, and I'll describe that process, how we can do that in just a moment. In 2020, we did go to the Design Review Committee twice. We looked at both design issues in one of the hearings. And then second hearing, we looked at land use issues. And we definitely got design comments from the DRC, and the project definitely had increased its aesthetic values and become a more attractive project since the original project. However, at the second hearing, there was no consensus really given on land use compatibility. And instead, the project was forwarded on to the Planning Commission so they could make a decision on that. And it was May 4th of this year that the Planning Commission did vote on the project four to three to support the conditional use permit to allow the mini storage. And as subsequently, the appeals from two city council members, both on May 6th and May 7th of this year, were received. And here we are tonight. So just a little bit of background on the whole conditional use permit process. We call it the CUP process for short. Really, that's reserved for projects that really would be of a nature or magnitude that might have an impact on their surroundings. These are projects that may fit or may not fit within their setting based on criteria. Now, there's also a number of findings and a number of conditions that can be added. And the conditions usually are designed to make the project fit a little better. But it doesn't mean that every conditional use permit has to get approved just because we apply conditions to it. Some can get denied as well if they just don't work. They're essentially a marginal use, a use that definitely needs further consideration. Now, there's no time limit on reapplying for a conditional use permit if it's not successful. Some cities do have a code that says you can't reapply for a year. We don't have that. So that's why we're here tonight. They were able to reapply, just as I mentioned, and they were able to go back through a process. And the Planning Commission again did approve it, and City Council again did deny it based on these findings. And essentially, you need to make only one finding to deny a conditional use permit. But you need to make all of the findings that we have in our zoning ordinance to be able to approve it. Kelly's going to give you some details about the project location and the architecture and, and proceed along. Thanks, Kelly.
Thank you, Phil. So we're all familiar with the location. It's a project site that's currently two lots. That's located between Viejo Camino and El Camino Real on the south end of town. It is in the public zoning district. The properties to the north of the project are zone commercial neighborhood. And the properties to the south continue that public zoning. There's residential properties on either side of the development, and Paloma Park is nearby. So in summary, the footprint of the buildings are 47,250 square feet. Building B is a two-story building. And so while that's not part of the footprint, it does add about 13,000 square feet of additional storage space. So the total facility size is 61,740 square feet with that second story on building B. So it does include mostly self-storage units. There is an office for the self-storage. And there is a workshop that will be used for building maintenance and also be used as a private workshop for the property owner. There's also some parking provided onsite, and there are five total buildings on the project site. I did want to note that the project did have a community room component when it first went to Planning Commission. This was going to be a community room that was available to rent by members of the public to use that space. That meeting room was removed as part of the Planning Commission process due to some traffic impacts. And so that community meeting space was proposed to be converted to sort of indoor storage units that might be temperature controlled in that sort of situation. So the mini storage does require conditional use permit in the public zone. And as Phil mentioned, findings have to be met. Some of the more main findings for this particular use relate to neighborhood compatibility and consistency with the general plan and community vision. So our public zoning district use is designated in the general plan as applying to parcels that can be publicly owned or privately owned, and that generally have facilities intended to meet a public service, institutional, educational, or religious needs of a community. So we did want to point out that while this is a public zoned parcel, it is privately owned. The city does not have ownership or control over this parcel. Within the public zoning district, here's kind of a chart of allowed and conditionally allowed uses. So there's a number of uses related to recreation that are allowed, schools, government offices, parks and playgrounds are allowed. A collection station is allowed. This one had a little bit of confusion at our DRC meetings. A collection station is our code, in our code is a very small facility that we generally see in a grocery store parking lot that just simply collects some recyclable materials in some bins and then moves those to a larger site. So it's not like a huge recycling facility. And then in terms of conditionally allowed uses, we have membership organizations, RV parks, mortuary services, childcare centers. Again, mini storage is listed there. There's some adult daycare, residential care facilities, and churches, things of that nature. In terms of the building design, the architect has proposed an agrarian style theme, does have some barn-like accents to fit in with our rural character. There's darker tones for the building faces and metal ribbing on the interior storage buildings. There are two-story buildings sort of on top of the knoll where the geodesic dome currently sits, so that would be building B. And then building A, which is that primary building on the northern side, is kind of a split level building. So it doesn't necessarily have two stories, but the workshop is sunken lower than the office and interior storage spaces for that. And then they've placed one-story buildings a little bit lower on the site. It is a somewhat level pad graded area, but it does slope downward in a way that'll still allows for vehicular access and emergency vehicle access while trying to work with the site as much as possible. So in terms of elevations, the top one is the north property line elevation. So this elevation would be facing the commercial properties that are currently vacant. So we can see building A there, which is the workshop area, sunken down here, built a little bit into the hillside. And then the office uses an interior temperature controlled storage area and office. And then down below is the south property line elevation, so that would be the elevation facing the existing colony home to the south and some of that vacant area that may be used for drainage and detention. It is the area that, facing the area that the Planning Commission has recommended in their approval and open space easement over. So this is a little bit abbreviated of an elevation. The fencing does continue a little bit longer, but these are kind of the building elevations. You can see the darker gray is the building that is adjacent to sort of the fencing and the creek restored area. And then the lighter gray buildings in the back are the buildings that continue to go up through the site. So those are grayed out a little bit because they are not right adjacent to that fence line. Again, this top elevation is Viejo Camino elevation. There's a couple 3D sketches that the applicants provided. The top one shows a lot of the storage buildings along Viejo Camino and what that would look like with the fencing incorporated and landscaping. And then this 3D model in the middle shows that, so the office component building off of the parking area. The lower elevation is what would be seen from El Camino Real. So this is where you see kind of all four buildings. And then this 3D modeling here kind of shows you building A, which is that top one on the knoll, building B, as if you're looking at it sort of from a side angle. These are the color and materials for the building. You can see they are using a stamped eco block for the site walls, which resembles a more natural stone than a typical split face block. And again, the darker toned metal and standing seam metal roofing, as well as the aluminum storefronts, especially on building A where they have some window detailing. So this is the site design. You can see it's divided into the five buildings. Building E is directly adjacent to Viejo Camino. Building D is the one that's on the southern side of the site. Building D is the one that's on the southern side of the site. And you can see vehicular circulation provided throughout the site. This triangular area that is outside of the project scope is the area that the planning commission resolution did recommend to have an open space easement placed on it. Either for any required wetland restoration, any required floodway or floodplain mapping. And then to increase neighborhood compatibility of the site in order for them to make findings for approval. This one's a little bit hard to read, but it is an overlay of the original, approved the original project from 2019 and the newer project with the reduced footprint. So you can see this area here used to be buildings and retaining walls. And so that area has been removed to allow for the reduced footprint and a more naturalized creek alignment in this area. This is the proposed preliminary landscape design. They are providing street trees along El Camino Real and Viejo Camino. They also have trees and shrubs throughout the realigned creek area as well as some trees and shrubs adjacent to some of the buildings to provide some buffering in that location. In terms of signage, they are allowed to have some signage. We have added conditions and that was part of the planning commission resolution of approval that the signage be non-illuminated since it's adjacent to residential properties. In terms of frontage improvements, our municipal code requires that all commercial properties provide frontage improvements for future build out of the streets that they are adjacent to. So this property does have frontage on both Viejo Camino and El Camino. So we are requiring bike lanes, curb gutter and sidewalk. Some additional striping on Viejo Camino to allow for a turn pocket into the project and make sure there's no conflicting movements with some of the streets and driveways across from the project site. As well as a parking lane on Viejo Camino. It is categorized as a collector road. And so at its build out, it is required to have parking on both sides and especially adjacent to the park to help facilitate park parking as well. And then there is a condition that restricts access off El Camino Real at this time. El Camino Real is anticipated potentially to be a wider street should there be a higher level of development in this area. But they are not required to widen the street at this time. And so we are restricting access off El Camino Real to ensure that the improvements that they're providing are safe for vehicles. So as I mentioned, there is a creek realignment as a part of the project. So the current development plan realigns that existing defined creek channel around the edge of the development area. So the creek currently is an ephemeral creek. It is not a year-round creek. It flows mostly when we have rains, even small rains will trigger that water in that area. There is a defined channel. The biologists did go out there and determine that it is jurisdictional. And so they are realigning a jurisdictional creek as part of this project. So our general plan requires a 20-foot setback to prevent any flood damage and to protect riparian habitat. And then the council or commission can make findings to allow encroachment into that setback or realignment of the creek. So in this particular case, there's not a lot of high-quality vegetation as part of the existing creek channel. The property has been grazed for a number of years. And so we don't see a heightened level of riparian vegetation adjacent to the creek. And we'll kind of get into some flood information in a couple of slides. So this is the creek channel design that they have proposed. We can see this sort of flat area towards the right of the creek is actually the city's sewer easement area. So that area is required to be maintained and be accessible to the city for maintenance of that sewer line. And then they have included vegetated side, sloping sides on both sides of the creek to kind of create a naturalized bank with a naturalized bottom that is wider than a typical culvert that we would see on some projects that choose to culvert the creek. And then the retaining wall to the project starts with a fence on top. And then there's approximately a nine to 10-foot setback and then building D pops up. So they have provided some space between the retaining wall and fence and building D to allow for some additional landscaping. This is an overview of the area showing the FEMA mapping details and sort of the floodways and the floodplains. So we see the project site here where there is sort of some backup as the water goes through the culverts under Viejo Camino. And this is a little bit closer up area of the site. So the purple area is the floodway. And that is the portion of the site where if there is any fill or impacts in this area that change the quality of this area and how much water this area can hold. Then they need to go through the FEMA process to redo FEMA mapping to ensure that there's no greater impacts downstream or on adjacent properties in terms of the floodway. And to prove that there is still the same amount of sort of water holding and flow through capacity on the property as there was. So they are building into this purple area and they will have to go through the FEMA process with a full hydrology analysis to redo the FEMA mapping for these particular project sites. We can see kind of the darker blue is the area that is subject to flooding. It currently overlaps onto the adjacent property, which I believe is the property with the existing colony home on it. So we do see that that property is currently affected by the current flow pattern of the water. So as I mentioned, they will have to go through a FEMA process, both a conditional letter of map revision prior to their project commencing. And then once their project is done, they will get that letter of map revision after they sort of prove that everything has been built the way that they said it was going to be. And with that, we will do a full hydrology analysis to make sure that there are no impacts to adjacent or downstream properties. Through that analysis, they'll have to prove that post-development flow is equal to or less than the pre-development flow. And that the floodplain stays in the same area on adjacent properties. So one of the findings that you need to make is that the project is consistent with the general plan. I'm not going to read through all of these. They are included in your staff report with the analysis. But we've included them here in case we need to go back and discuss any of those. And again, some of our general plan policies also relate to creeks and riparian areas, and those have been included in the staff report as well. So in order to approve the conditional use permit, there are actually seven findings in this case that need to be made. We've highlighted a couple that are the most applicable to this particular project proposal. Consistency with the general plan, neighborhood character, in compliance with pertinent city policies. And then compliance with onsite creek and riparian areas in terms of the findings that our general plan specifies for that. We did want to note that the previous city council finding for the 2019 mini storage project to deny the project was based on neighborhood character and orderly development of the surrounding area. And so the planning commission did take action on the project to approve the current proposal. We just wanted to highlight a couple of conditions that were included in that approval. Again, the open space easement, as I mentioned, over the unused portions on the southern portion of the site. The community room space was eliminated and that was converted to temperature-controlled storage units. And then I just wanted to note that the fencing was removed between building E and Viejo Camino. There used to be the backup sidewalk and then a fence and then the building that did not allow for adequate street tree planting on the private property side in that location. And so at the planning commission meeting, the fencing was removed. And the building now acts as the barrier between the project site and the road, and that allows some additional space for tree planting. So the council has two actions tonight that you can consider. There's draft resolution A, which upholds the planning commission's approval of the project. Or draft resolution B, which overturns the planning commission's action and denies the mini storage project. Again, as Phil noted, to adopt the resolution of approval, all the findings must be made. And to adopt the resolution for overturning the planning commission's action, only one finding needs to be made. As an alternative, the council can continue the item for further discussion or analysis as needed. So that does conclude staff's presentation. Phil and I are available for questions if you have any.
Thank you, Ms. Gleason. So what we will do is we will start with council asking questions of staff and some of the just to let all of the public know that we have received many of your emails and letters. Many of you for, many of you against this project. So we have seen it all. We've seen the emails that originally went to planning commission, went to planning commission a second time, like we've seen all of that. So some of the questions we ask may be in response to some of those to get clarification from staff. Once we as a council go through all of our questions from staff, then we will bring on the applicant and we've given the applicant 10 minutes to make their presentation. We will then go into public comment. And after, well, let me back up a second. After the applicant does their 10-minute presentation, we as council, if we have questions of the applicant, then we will at that time ask those questions to clarify. Then we will go into public comment. After public comment, I have allowed the applicant another three minutes to wrap up. If there's something that hasn't been said or that came to light that they need to mention, and then we will bring it back to the council for deliberation. So just so you know how this is going to go. I think just a little while ago, I saw someone's hand raised. And so just know that we're not calling on anybody right now for public comment. That will come later. You're free to keep your hand raised. But for right now, we're not doing public comment. We will get to you. Trust me. So with that, I will look to my fellow council members for questions, starting with council member Daris.
Thank you, Mayor. I have two questions. One is probably going to be more for Mr. Pyric. I'll ask that one second. For the first question for Kelly or Phil is if I could get a clear definition of what immediate neighborhood means and how that, you know, to what the expanses and how that this project would affect, to what extent an immediate neighborhood?
I don't know that we have a definitive definition for immediate neighborhood. When we do notification, our typical notification standards include 300 foot around a project boundary. Immediate neighborhood typically means where can you see, feel here are the project from in the neighborhood. And so that means, hey, across the street, next door, two to three properties away within that range. So there's not really, in terms of our policies, we don't have a specific definition. So it's sort of an assumption.
Okay, thank you. And my next question is a procedural question more or less. This project that we're seeing was by majority vote passed by the planning commission as saying that it met all the conditions or the findings that Ms. Gleason just mentioned. But then it was appealed based on one find, not being able to find, meeting one of the findings. So my question is, as this hearing that we're at now, are we considering all of the findings or are we just focusing on the one finding that the appeal, that is the basis for the appeal?
We have to make all of the findings in order to approve a conditional use permit tonight regardless of the basis of the appeal. So you still have to go through and look at all of those findings. And now that the project is back up, we're hearing back open. All of those findings are before us to be made.
Okay, thank you, Phil. Actually, I would, with all due respect, I want to hear from Mr. Pyric on that one as well, if I could.
Absolutely.
Yeah, the answer is, as Phil indicated, all of the findings would need to be made in order to approve the project.
All right, thank you.
Other questions? Councilmember Funk. You're on mute, Councilmember Funk.
All the pandemic and we still have to learn to take ourselves off mute. Okay, let me start by asking, could you give me the heights of the various buildings in the project?
Yes, and that question's for staff. I think we have. Kelly, have you got that in front of you right now? The heights of, I think there were some correspondence sent out today on that. So we were verifying that. Let's pull that up here just a moment.
I know, I know what we pulled today was building E and building D. So building E is twelve and a half feet to the top of the roof ridge. And then building D is six, about sixteen and a half feet to the top of the roof ridge. I believe they both have vertical walls that are approximately 10 feet tall. I believe from the plans, building B, which is your two-story building, is the tallest. That's about 25 feet. Building C is at about 16 and a half feet, similar to building D. And then building A, which is kind of the split level building, is at about 21 and a half feet.
Okay, and how high is the retaining wall that comes up from the swale before you go back?
Sure, let me get that picture there. So the retaining wall in this particular section cut location, I did check the plans and the most recent plan set. We don't have detailed grading that shows us top of wall and bottom of wall along the entire length of the wall. But this is sort of the section cut location where the creek is sort of most constrained between the adjacent property and building D. So you can see from this sort of vegetated slope here, this face of the wall here is approximately five feet in this location.
Okay, and in the prior version of this that we considered back in 2019, how high was that retaining wall?
Yeah, the wall, the face of the wall appeared a little bit higher because the wall acted as the entire side of the creek area. So you didn't have this vegetated slope to soften the height of the wall.
Okay.
I don't know the exact number on what that wall was.
Yeah, my recollection is that was, there was nine feet of wall from the base of the swale straight up in the prior version. In this looks like we have a similar elevation, but you've got a lot of, you've got a slant there that softened.
Correct, yeah.
Okay. And then a few other things. It helped me in visualizing to look at how this compared to other things that were around, around it, or there would be around it. So can you compare roughly the site, the height of buildings D and E, which are on the Viejo Camino side of the project, with the height of the the homes that are, they're pitch roof homes on La Paloma Court that are right across the street from the southern end of the project?
Sure. So building E is the building that's kind of lengthwise against Viejo Camino. And that one's the one that's a little bit shorter, about 12 and a half feet to the peak of the building. You can see it's a more narrow building. So it doesn't quite take as much to get to the center with the roof line before you head back down. And then building D, which is a little bit wider, is the one that's about 16 and a half feet to the peak of the roof. We did not go out and measure the houses on La Paloma Court, but just looking and assuming, making some assumptions about the wall height that it's a standard residential construction and the walls are about eight or nine feet. And then looking to the pitch of that roof and scale. We kind of concluded that from the ground floor to the highest pitch of the roof along La Paloma Court is also about 16 feet in height. So very similar to building D.
Okay, and then what's the width of building D versus the, say, the width of the intersection there with La Paloma Court and Viejo Camino, which is roughly across the street? Is as best as I could interpret the plans?
Yeah, so we just kind of went with Google Maps and kind of measured the width of La Paloma Court where it enters onto Viejo Camino. It's about 31 feet wide in terms of pavement. Building D is a 50-foot wide building.
Okay, thank you. And in, if, could you go back to the, a few slides to the slide that had the elevations? The first of those elevation slides? Yeah, that one. Okay. So if you look at the southern property line elevation, you see rectangles there, light gray rectangles along the face of the project. Is that the effect? Is that, are we just looking at sections of fence? Is that the effect? Is that, are we just looking at sections of fence? Or are we looking at rolled doors behind that fencing?
That is just sections of fence. There's no vehicular access behind the building. There, there are potentially, I'd have to look at the floor plans, potentially some pedestrian doors that might lead to the back if needed for egress. But there will not be any roll-up vehicular doors on that side.
Okay, thank you. I, I will save one, save a, one question for the applicant. The, the lots that are to the north of this project, there are on the map, I see three lots that are vacant, and then there's the one lot that has the liquor store in the corner, the mini store. What's the zoning on those lots?
Sure, that is commercial neighborhood. So it's a little bit less intense than our normal commercial retail zone would be. It's a unique zoning. We don't see very often. There's some, there's some spots along Laurel Road, and then there's kind of this spot here.
And is mini storage allowed as a usage with a CUP in commercial neighborhood zoning?
No.
Okay, and then to the south of this project, am I correct in recalling that everything else in this wedge of property, south of this project, between the project and Santa Barbara Road, is zoned public?
That's correct.
Okay, and there are developed, underdeveloped and developed properties in that wedge?
Correct.
Okay. And we did still keep mini storages allowed use, so other, mini storages could be proposed in those other properties?
Correct, with a, with a use permit, yes.
With a, right, they did go through the same process. Okay. That should do me for now.
Councilmember Burdo.
Yeah, I'm afraid I can't let you off that easy. I'm gonna have a lot more questions. And unfortunately, I just scribbled them down as they came up, so they, they may jump back and forth in terms of the topic. So in terms of heights, like Councilmember Funk, I had questions regarding height. When I met with the applicant's representative, I asked her two questions, and as I indicated, she sent me two emails that I have provided to the clerk. I think she had time to send one of them to all rest of the council and perhaps not the second. But on the first one, and I don't know if the clerk has this response available, because I thought it was an interesting question. I think members of the public would be interested in knowing as well, and that is, what is the relative height of building A compared to the existing geodesic dome house? And I don't know if you have, as I indicated, the applicant's representative sent us, sent me, and I forwarded an email with that depiction. I don't know if the clerk or if Mr. Dunsmore, Ms. Gleason could call that up.
I can pull that up for you real quick.
I have, I have some images too, from some of those emails that I, we can put on the screen as well. I think both, some of those, those site, or the elevation renderings and the photographs as well too, as we get to those discussions.
Right.
There we go.
So, so the, the question would be, I mean, how is the height compared to the existing dome house? And it looks like it's almost as tall, but it is slightly lower than the existing dome house.
Right, I believe, I believe like about two feet, two feet lower than the existing peak of the dome.
Got it. And then this, this reflects, if I understand it correctly, the building B is a little bit, you know, and these lighter gray reflects the fill, or is the darker gray reflect the fill?
The kind of lighter gray would be the fill, and I believe the darker gray is the existing.
Okay, the existing grade level, okay. So the, so the fill is only the gray portions, light gray portions that we see here. And so building B, building B is sort of two stories, but sort of not two stories. Where you're looking at it from, I guess. Okay, got it. Okay, the other one was these long, you know, these long buildings as drawn have long, flat roof line, and I'd asked what it would be, you know, how difficult it would be to have them have some other feature, and, and she sent an email regarding that. And my question is, my staff is, I'm assuming that we could impose conditions to add, have a more decorative roof line, so it wouldn't be a long, flat roof line?
Absolutely, we could put conditions on to that nature. Thanks for bringing that image up. Yeah, I know those are sort of the, I think, an angled roof and then some cupola features. It looks like that the applicant had shot over to show as an image today.
And these, on these, you see, you have the long side of the building and you have the short sides of the building, and it looks like there's some window features that I believe are fake windows, if you will, but they're for appearance. We could condition having more of those if, if it was desirable for appearance purposes, right? Although, in theory, you'd want them covered with landscaping and, in time. But we could condition additional architectural features like that?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Then, along the lines of what Councilmember Duriz asked, he asked, what is a neighborhood? And I think we can see from the community, from the letters, a lot of them from across the street, La Paloma Court, a lot of them from Los Lomas, which is a mile away, but they obviously feel it's in their neighborhood as well as Dove Creek. Do we define, and in those letters, there's a lot of reference, or some, some repeated reference to rural nature of the neighborhood, semi-rural nature of the neighborhood. Do we have a definition of that? In our, in our code, or in our descriptions, or for planning purposes?
We, we don't have that. We have policies in our general plan that talk about preserving our rural nature and our rural tree-lined streets. We don't have a definition of what that really is. I mean, in general, all of the Tascadero has a rural feeling to it, unless you're right along El Camino Real in one of the commercial nodes. Otherwise, our area is full of rural views and rural sense of place. So the entire community is, is that particular way, more some, some neighborhoods more than others, obviously. But we don't have a definition that's very clear in that respect.
But a 400 unit apartment complex across the street probably wouldn't be rural in nature. I'm talking Bordeaux House.
Probably not a rural feeling when you're within that development.
Do we have any, I, you know, as indicated, I talked to Rex Hendricks, who's lived here, I think, 90 years, about historical use of the property. Do we have any feeling, or the staff have any information regarding the historical use of the property? I'm going way back, you know, there's a colony home on it, so, you know, was it ever farmed, or has it just been grazed?
Given that it's flat like that and adjacent to a colony home, and as we know, the colony homes all were designed to be these self-sustaining estates, surrounded by grazing land and farmland, it's probably been used for a variety of things that are agricultural related, such as grazing and farming. So we don't really have an exact history on that property.
Yeah, so given its appearance as a field, if you will, do we have any information regarding, do we have any reason to believe that the way the water flows through the site is the natural way it flowed through the site 100, you know, and 20 years ago before E.G. Lewis came to town?
We, we don't know that. It could have changed many, many times. The development of El Camino Real, the development of Highway 101, the development of Viejo Camino, the development of Paloma Park, the development of all those neighborhoods, probably changed those water courses each and every time something was developed. It's very likely.
And speaking of that, do you know how old the homes on Paloma Court, La Paloma Court are? And do you know when the Regional Water Quality Control Board and other agencies began the requirement to, you know, account for all of the water that your impervious surfaces of a project are going to generate? And keep that additional water on site so that there's no impact on the downstream property owners?
We don't have the information tonight on the age of those homes unless Kelly has it, but the information.
Pulled up the records and it looks like they were built around 2000, maybe a little after some of them.
Kelly is so quick. She just, look at that, just.
That is impressive.
That's pretty impressive. But the other question you have in terms of regional water control, that's much more recent. That all, that all happened within the last five to 10 years in terms of their gradual shift of regulations in terms of hydro modification in water. It's gotten stricter and stricter each year over the last decade, but I couldn't tell you the exact year unless Kelly has that one in.
No, but I think Ryan Hayes is.
Yeah.
On our meeting, and he might be able to answer that.
Let me ask another, another question before making Ryan jump into that. On the Dove Creek side of El Camino Real, where this, where the water comes from, I walked that, I rode my bike around the whole neighborhood yesterday. I took a couple of pictures, one standing right on the, on El Camino Real, on the covert, looking towards Dove Creek, the project. And I provided those to the city manager. There's a large area there that looks like it's a retention basin, has cattails in it that are looking kind of dead right now, but a very wide area. Those are the kind of things that regional water quality control, fish and wildlife, whatever, that's what they require. If you're gonna change the course of a wetland, or you're gonna cause additional runoff. And Dove Creek has, I don't know, a couple hundred homes in it, I'm sure substantially more impervious surfaces than in this thing. So they would have had to retain all that extra water essentially on their side of El Camino Real before it flowed onto this property, correct?
Yeah, they had a couple different things going. So the, the site did have, obviously, the forks of the Blue Line Creek, that a portion runs through this property. And they actually went through the FEMA process because they did do some remapping of the creek and FEMA flood areas. They also had existing wetlands on the site. Both sides of El Camino Real have historically had existing wetlands. I believe when we look at the sort of Fish and Wildlife Wetland Mapper, that goes back quite a few years and maps, maps the wetlands that existed a decent number of years ago. So both sides had existing wetland features. Through Fish and Wildlife and Army Corps of Engineers, if you, if you touch or disturb wetlands, they usually have you mitigate by providing more wetland habitat on site. So some of these wetlands likely were increased as part of the Dove Creek project. But they did have wetlands on site, and in fact, the project just to the north has wetlands on their site as well.
So that the, but conceptually speaking, they had to keep all of their extra water, I'd say extra water created by their, you know, their rooftops and their roads. They had to keep that on their side to prevent extra water flowing onto this project site and farther downstream alongside La Paloma Court, right?
Yeah, and that was definitely part of their FEMA process to prove no downstream impacts with their remapping.
So this applicant would in turn have to do the same thing and ensure that no additional water, you know, flowed, you know, down past La Paloma Court and the park, right? I mean, that's the whole purpose of those, those things. And they, and in doing so, they have to go through, I think you indicated, four regulatory agencies to gain approval for that?
Yes.
Right, Fish and Wildlife, Corps of Engineers, FEMA, and I'm forgetting the other one.
Regional Water Quality Control Board.
Right, so that they have to retain any and all additional water that comes off as a result of their site. Now, you mentioned, and I certainly believe it to be the case, that Dove Creek, when they did their work, probably expanded on whatever wetland was there. And in doing so, they probably created additional habitat for red-legged frogs or whatever else might, you know, been, you know, might have existed in there previously, or came along after they increased the wetland?
That is likely the case, that they did increase, increase the wetland area.
And so that would likely be the case if this project went through, that you would see an increased wetland and probably increased habitat. Is that reasonable?
So sort of since Dove Creek was approved, there's been a number of federal regulations that have been updated related to wetlands and things like that. So the Army Corps of Engineer would take the federal side of wetlands. We do, we don't think, based on the biologist's report, that there are federally designated wetlands on the site. However, the state has different definitions, and it is likely that the state definition is triggered. So it would likely be Department of Fish and Wildlife that would govern any wetland impacts, and then any required restoration areas. But those areas generally come along with a five-year maintenance bond and maintenance schedule that's required to ensure that the vegetation is established for that native wetland.
Not that.
Yeah, any area that was restored, you know, would have sort of a five-year maintenance contract on it to make sure that all the growies were, were happy and healthy and it was functioning properly.
Got it, got it. And the plants, the newly planted vegetation didn't all die or something? Okay, so speaking of the biologist's report and the differing definitions between the state and the federal government, I didn't see it in this thing, but in, in 2019, when we reviewed the previous project, there was, in, in our staff report, it indicated that the biologist's report indicated that there were 0.14 acres of state jurisdictional wetland, mostly where the water comes under the covert, and there's, you know, some small tree, there's a tree thing there, and zero federal jurisdiction wetlands. Despite the fact that the wetland mapper indicated 1.8 acres might be jurisdictional. So that biologist's report, that, nothing would have changed on that between then and, would that be correct?
I would, I would say yes, however, because we had almost no rain this year. It takes sort of three categories to be considered a wetland. There's some soils characteristics, the type of vegetation. And I think there's one other category. So the federal government says you have to meet all three to be considered a wetland. And I believe the state's rule is still that you only have to meet one. So they did meet that one criteria. With our super low rain year, that criteria may have shrunk. It may still be there. We haven't had a more recent biological survey to know exactly what that area looks like today.
But they, but they would have to meet whatever requirement those agencies want. And if they, so if, if they needed to, or wanted to, or if one of those agencies wanted them to, you know, create, I think in, when the previous project was considered 0.77 acres of wetland habitat, let's say they needed to create a half acre, that might go into that triangle area that the commission recommended as open space, is that?
Correct. Now, we, we don't have a full hydrology analysis for this current version of the project. Hydrology analysis is very expensive. Because of the reduced footprint, the assumption is that they can make the hydrology of the site work because they actually have more area to work with. But in the previous project in 2019, a majority of that triangle was either stormwater detention, either floodplain remapping, or wet, or wetland habitat restoration. And so we, we do believe they have ample area there to accommodate any of those conditions.
Well, I would hope, given the price of a, you know, hydrology analysis, which is, this is it from last time, you know, if there's less, it's a smaller thing, I would hope that the previous study would suffice. But, okay, let's see, we move on from water, I think. At least for the moment. The sewer line that was mentioned here and mentioned as a possible pathway for people to walk on. Right now, I mean, I walked that line and I saw one manhole cover, and maybe I missed some. Was that sewer line installed by the city to service Dove Creek?
I'm gonna let Ryan answer that question.
And. Sorry, it took me a second to get in here. Yes, that is correct.
And so it's not all that old, man. I mean, maybe 15 years old or something like that?
Yeah.
Do we know if the city dug up, you know, dug up along that line and through the creek channel as it approaches Viejo Camino? In order to do that, were we allowed to do that?
I don't know the answer to whether that was done with open trenching or boring. I would suspect probably open trenching, but I don't know.
Okay, then. Okay, so the, in terms of the project itself, in terms of the landscaping, you know, we're talking about having landscaping to. you know, we're talking about having landscaping to screen this project. Um, now, the the landscaping in the uh, wetland would be natural stuff, I assume. And and these, on the street, these would be normal city street trees, but the other landscaping, we have a tendency to, on the one hand, want to plant that native stuff. On the other hand, native drought tolerant stuff isn't very fast growing. And if we want landscaping that would um, screen the the buildings, et cetera, um, is our policy, uh, do we need to change our policy, make an exception? If we were, if we're specifically looking for landscaping that would screen the structures and the fencing?
We don't, we don't have policies that that require native landscaping on the site. We're going to require that in the basin area, creek area, but not on the, against the walls or against the street or against the buildings on the site. And in fact, if you did use native vegetation and it's irrigated, it can actually grow quite quick. It's pretty amazing. A coastal live oak or uh, some of these other native shrubs, how fast they grow when they're irrigated. For example, the coastal live oaks that we have in our Sunken Gardens Park that were planted probably fifteen, eighteen years ago are almost full-sized trees now. And in in a native setting, they would be just basically shrubs at this point. So it's it's pretty incredible what you can also do to manipulate native landscape.
I just also wanted to say that we do have to comply with the state's uh, water efficiency ordinance. And so sometimes that pushes us a lot towards natives.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, certainly there are other options there uh, that can be considered as long as they comply with the state's um, efficiency calculation.
Yeah, very, very concerned about the appearance piece. And so I'm wondering about, um, you know, the landscaping, because one of our, uh, at least, at least one of our uh, letter writers, um, you know, talked about, uh, you know, it's easy to draw a nice uh, picture, architectural rendering and, and and I think that's very true. We on the council always have to be careful not to fall for pretty picture syndrome of, you know, lush landscaping around a project. Um, and so I'm concerned about conditioning it for, you know, to be reasonably fast growing. I'm concerned about well, how do we enforce landscaping requirements? Say, five years down the road and I'm I'm thinking of the Food for Less Shopping Center, which is over thirty years old. Um, it was actually approved when I was last on council in the late eighties and it uh, you know, it, I mean, those trees just never grow. Um, compared to some of our other more recent uh, facilities. And I don't, I'd be very concerned about approving a project with the idea that, hey, this is going to be very nicely landscaped, it's going to look nice. And then ten years from now, um, you still see the buildings and I'm concerned that uh, the same letter writer actually had gone into Pomona, taken photographs of uh, of the, one of the facilities that the applicant owns. And uh, and I I'm guessing is ten years old now or more. And that level of landscaping would not suffice for me to say that that would be adequate. Um, how do we enforce landscaping provisions after somebody, you know, plants what you tell them to plant, but then, you know, we walk away and five years later, it's half dead or it hasn't grown?
Yeah, you bring up some very good points, and these are some points in these older shopping centers that we have in town where there are landscape plans that were poorly planted, poorly maintained. And they're actually using growth retardants on these plants, uh, we found out recently in the last couple of years. So, for example, at the Food for Less Center and and the Bond Center, uh, we have been speaking to their landscapers over there and they've been using growth retardants and massively trimming the canopy at the top of the head. Uh, in fact, if you look at, I'm not gonna, actually, you know what, I'm not gonna point out some of the names of the centers, but if you look at some of the names of of the centers or some of the centers we have on the north end of town near Del Rio or uh, south of Curb Hill, they are poorly maintained. And what we need to do is we need to adopt project conditions on projects like this uh, to allow the landscape to grow to its full size, to not prune the trees on top of the tree, on top of the actual main caliper. And to not treat them with these growth retardants. They actually treat them with a a high phosphorus fertilizer, which is what you give to plants to make them flower. And what it does, it stops the growth of these trees so that I think the goal in these shopping centers is they want to be able to have the store visible. And so they're reducing the growth of the trees. It's really unfortunate. But there's other shopping centers where I've seen trees grow to full size, they're planted really well, they're irrigated really well, and they aren't given these growth retardants. So that's a very critical thing that we need to have conditions of approval as we move forward and ensure that the planting's done right and ensure the long-term maintenance um, is done in such a way that these things can uh, grow quite rapidly. For example, if you look at the trees that are across the street from City Hall in our newer parking lot area, I was noting to Kelly today just how fast our London Plain sycamores are growing because they're irrigated and they're pruned properly and they're not treated with the growth retardant. So it's, that's a very important factor.
Okay, thank you. And um, Kelly mentioned that, you know, in the wetland area, uh, there might have to bond for five years or something to ensure that, you know, that it gets going. We, I assume we could do the same sort of thing for the other, the screening landscaping that we might, we could require some bonding to ensure that replacements of things that die gets going and that the thing is.
Yes.
We could require that. Okay, got it. Um, okay, and then, um, about that, um, some of these things I think I can probably hold off um, on although hang on, I got a separate set here. Um, the oh, the view from the Colony House uh, in one of the cross-section maps that Ms. Gleason showed, it showed uh, there being a short wall of concrete, the one that shows the creek cross cross-section. There, thank you. Um, on that, it shows, it looks like a concrete stem wall with a with a footing there, yes, where you're pointing there. And then you indicated a fence on top. What I'm curious about is so if I own and live in the Colony House and I'm looking alongside my property line, am I gonna, what am I gonna see? Am I gonna see a concrete wall with a wooden fence on top? Um, and the reason I ask is in in the pictures I provided, if you look at what's behind La Paloma Court, where this water flows, um, you know, there's a concrete wall with a wood fence on top and, and you know, it's fine to look at from a city park, but it's pretty damn ugly, to be honest. Um, and uh, I don't know if we have those pictures, but do we know what this concrete wall would look like? Is it gonna have some more attractive facing on it? And because this, you know, comes along essentially the the, right, you know, the property line of a single home, why does it have a fence on it on top of a wall? I understand on the other side of this creek, you want to keep people from, you know, climbing into the project facility, but what's the purpose of having a fence there? And have the neighbors been consulted on that?
Kelly, I dropped um, those photos into a little tiny mini PowerPoint presentation that's on the, on the Q drive. I can open that up or you can share your screen and open that up with the pictures that.
Yeah, if you want to open that up, that'd be great. Um.
Uh, let me, let me do that. But in the meantime, answer his, answer the question.
Yeah, I know there's been some conversation, um, with the previous project especially between the neighbor and the applicant, um, because I also know, uh, part of building up the site with the original project was to assist them sort of with flooding control. Um, I don't know how that's gone um, i- in terms of the current project. Uh, the property, yes, would be looking at a block wall with a fence on top. Our municipal code does require solid screening between a commercial use and a residential use, whether or not the property is zoned for residential or not. Um, so part of that comes from our code, although there can be exceptions, um, especially if the adjacent property owner wants something different. I believe that the grid wells might be logged on um, this evening and might be able to provide public comments on that. Um, I will note that as a condition of approval, we uh, required all retaining walls to be that natural-looking stone material. Um, and so it would not be a standard concrete block, but it would be that uh, stone material that's proposed uh, for the rest of the project as well.
Thank you. I'm concerned that that concrete block that we're talking about has, is, looks natural on one side and not the other side. And if I was, you know, the grid wells, I'd want to be looking at the nice side, not the side that would create this effect here. You know.
Yeah, because they are looking at the face and then the rest has fill against it, they would, they would have the textured side towards the grid wells.
Okay, good. And um, and I would think that I understand our requirement to screen a commercial property from a residence, but if I was in their shoes, I'd rather have an open a a more open view of this revitalized wetland than look at something like this. So if, is that something that we can um, not require the fence, but leave it up to coordination between the applicant and the uh, Colony House owners?
Yes, and I believe we have some conditions about split rail fencing uh, adjacent to the uh, trail. I don't know if we intended it to apply to both sides or not, but certainly we can work with the adjacent property owner on a, on a solution that they agree.
And then the um, uh, since we're talking about that wall, a question for Public Works, you kind of alluded to it, but is it reasonable to assume that having that uh, the way you showed it in the cross-section would actually provide some level of protection for the colony home in terms of uh, you know, they're in the flood zone now. And uh, I asked, you said, you know, FEMA requires you keep the flood zone on neighboring properties the same. But I assume it's, I assume it's okay to make the flood zone on neighboring properties less.
But yeah, I believe so, as long as the total volume uh, can be maintained, you know, to prohibit downstream impacts. Um, Ryan might be able to address sort of those level of requirements. Um, I, again, I think for the applicant uh, or for the neighbor, if they've had any conversations with that, I know that was a part of the two thousand nineteen project. Um, I don't know if that is also the intent of the retaining wall in slightly higher grade as part of this project.
All right, um, okay. You know, I've probably talked enough. I'm sure everybody else thinks so. Um, I think I can defer, although Mary might possibly have uh, additional questions after uh, public comment.
Mr. Hayes has popped on to uh, because I also had that question about the grid wells, because many people of the grid wells, of course, themselves and others had emailed in and and talking about their property and the impacts. And so just to have staff talk about what does need to be done to mitigate any potential impacts if Ryan wanted to come back on.
I did want to hop on just before Ryan, um, condition number seven on the resolution, uh, does speak about fencing against the grid well property. So it does require privacy fencing. But we do have a caveat in there that says unless transparent fencing is agreed to by the adjacent property owner. Um, so we do have an existing condition that addresses that.
All right, thank you very much.
Talk about flooding.
Thank you.
Um, in general, yes, I mean, you, I mean, we can um, require that conditions are approved for neighboring parcels are designed standards actually um, require that open channel flows be able to safely convey one hundred-year flood flows, um, which is what the neighboring parcel is in the hundred-year floodplain um, on the actual flood channel. Um, and then jump, well, yeah, that was kind of what you were asking right now. It would jump back a little bit with regard to Dove Creek and what they were required to do. The current post-construction requirements standards, which is the strictest we are to date, came into effect in two thousand fourteen, but kind of started becoming implemented um, a little after Dove Creek, but Dove Creek was required to meet our, all of our flood control requirements, which are fairly strict. So as well as all the permitting um, requirements, which Kelly had already mentioned, so.
Right, so if you were, if you were looking at the pictures I I provided there, there's the first one or one of them is from the Dove Creek side. The project would look more like that and not like the one we just saw along La Paloma Court.
Correct, yes.
Got it, all right. Thank you. Well, since you're on Public Works, I do have a couple of questions directly for you. As part of the condition of this project or any project like it, they have to put in curb gutter and sidewalk along the uh, along in this case Viejo Camino and El Camino Real. And and as Kelly mentioned, in the lane, that's pretty standard practice. But we, the council, had recently agreed to use CDBG funding to put in curb gutter and sidewalk so that there will be a continuous pathway from the convenience store to certainly to the bus stop, but also in down to across from the entrance to the park. If this project were approved, they would take care of a portion of that automatically on Viejo Camino, correct?
They would take care of the portion of fronting, you know, funding their property. Um, that would actually, the limits of our CDBG project would come up right up to the edge of where their improvements would go to at their parcel line. So it would like, well.
As we approve the project, though, uh, I thought, because I asked the question at the time, as we approve the CDBG project, didn't it contain the frontage of this property as well?
It did not, as we originally proposed it.
Okay, okay, but so they would.
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
They wouldn't be saving a CDBG money, but they would continue the the sidewalk, make it more functional.
Correct.
Okay, and refresh my memory, that was a hundred and some thousand dollars of CDBG money for that?
I think your memory might be better than mine on that. I believe it's something to that effect, yes.
Right. And then we require, as a matter of course, uh, the sidewalk improvement on the El Camino side. In this case, it would appear not along the entire uh, length of the property. I guess because the planning commission's recommendation that that be open space and that, but Mike, I've always had this concern about sidewalks to nowhere. You know, that we require a sidewalk and there's no other sidewalk around. Can we, and I believe we can, but can we condition an applicant like this to say, you know, we really don't need a sidewalk on El Camino right now? Um, and if that portion, other portion is open space, we'd never get the sidewalk done. Could we condition them to do the sidewalk that we are considering doing with CDBG money thereby saving the city CDBG money? You know, and then later the uh, um, other property owner who benefited might have to to pay into something. Maybe that's a field question.
That one, um, because our code doesn't essentially allow us to do that. It wouldn't be a nexus to the project directly. But separately, if we wanted to enter an agreement, a private agreement, a development agreement, for example, with the applicant to do something like that, we could. Uh, they'd have to be willing, a willing partner to do that in exchange, but uh, we can't require it as a condition per se. Um, as a code requirement per se for our, for the project.
I did want to clarify too that the um, the sidewalk will be the entire frontage of El Camino. It does include the open space area as well, because that is required for buildout of that street section.
Okay, thank you for that, because I didn't see it that way in the drawing. Maybe it was just me. Thank you for those answers and I I think I'm done. For now, Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, other council questions? Uh, Mayor Potemnison?
But I'm going to hold my questions until after the applicant's presentation.
Okay. Any other questions? Councilmember Funk?
Yeah, a couple more. Um, uh, Kelly, you used the term jurisdictional creek. Uh, could you define that?
Sure. So uh, when the biologist goes out and determines that it's jurisdictional, basically that means that um, Army Corps of Engineers and or Fish and Wildlife will take jurisdiction over permitting for any impacts uh, to the creek and the defined riparian area surrounding it. And any wetlands, wetland areas that are identified.
Okay, great. Um, and then you mentioned that in the future, we might need to uh, widen El Camino Real. Is there enough space in the uh, in the horizontal, um, in the la, in the landscaping plan and the with siding of the buildings so that um, if El Camino has to be uh, widened, that there would, you'd still be able to preserve the street trees that will have been planted as a result of this project?
Yes, so the landscape plan, um, as it is currently shown, um, includes all of the trees um, on the applicant's property. And this maybe isn't the most recent landscape plan. Um, so these trees here are the street trees. You can see this here is the right-of-way line, this darker darker line here. So that is the potential limits of any widening that might have to happen in the future if this area intensifies um, enough to require two lanes um, in that direction. But I'm I'm seeing in their most uh, recent plans that they do have larger street trees uh, planted in this area uh, behind the right-of-way.
So there wouldn't necessarily be the um, double layer of. So there wouldn't necessarily be the double layer of trees and bushes that we see here now. But that there would, but the street trees themselves would be preserved.
Correct, I think it would be a little bit more like this rendering here with a single layer of trees.
Yeah, and without necessarily the room for the bushes, because.
Yeah, I think I think there would be.
There'd be room.
It looks like a little bit less than 10 feet, maybe eight feet between the right of way and where there's sort of pavement and fencing would start. So there would there would be room for some shrubs and grasses and things of that nature in between the trees.
Okay, and then I'll reserve other questions for the applicant. Thank you.
Thank you. I would ask if you could, as I looked at some of the the emails that came in, the comments, you know, several of the residents are concerned about traffic, but specifically traffic as it relates to, you know, larger larger vehicles pulling in and out, of course, moving moving vehicles off of in and off of Via Camino. Could you speak to how that would? You know, what what the applicant will need to do to make sure for safety reasons?
Ryan, do you want to take that or I know Nick reviewed this project with us originally, and I know that there are some turn lanes required on Viejo Camino, you know, with adequate turn pockets to sort of allow for that movement to happen without blocking the lanes. Certainly, this is a very low traffic generating use in terms of traffic generating uses. And so I will defer to Ryan if I'm saying this wrong, but I don't think there would be a lot of queuing in that turn pocket where a lot of larger vehicles would stack up.
And I think it's more the concern with the the larger vehicles than under. And again, I know it's a low traffic use, but I know that's something that residents brought up. And so if we could speak to that for those that are that are listening tonight, I would appreciate it.
I agree with Kelly. The left turn pockets would be required as as a conditional part of the project to allow for any vehicles in general and larger vehicles to be able to get out of the main to travel lanes. And as Kelly noted, the actual volumes of traffic would be fairly low. There would be, you know, traffic analysis needs to be done to figure out, to make sure that the queuing doesn't go outside of those those turn lanes.
No, wonderful. Thank you so much. And Councilmember Barbeau, I think exhausted most of the questions I had for staff. So thank you for that, Charles. So why do we do this? We're at 7:33. Let's go ahead and move on to the applicant presentation. As I said, we set aside 10 minutes for that, and then we'll ask questions of the applicant. And at that point, we'll probably take a brief recess before going on to public comment. And so do we know who will be making that presentation? Will that be Ms. Romero or who do who do we have doing that?
I believe Ms. Romero will be making the presentation. I need to get up on my screen.
Okay, she's raised her hand. Luke, might you be able to bring her on as a panelist? Okay, I'm not. Okay, wait, I think we might have gotten her up here. There she is. Good evening, Ms. Romero.
Well, good evening, Mayor. My time doesn't start till my presentation's up, right?
I I will give you that for certain, of course.
Oh, well, thank you all for being here tonight and doing this. Really appreciate your time. I know you've done two nights in a row now, so you deserve a little combat pay for that. Well, it looks like my presentation is up, so I'll get moving. Well, good evening. My name is Frances Romero. Thank you, council members, Mayor Moreno, staff and members of the public. Want to let you know that tonight we have Locke Soderquist, the project architect, as well as Scott Newton, the project applicant available, should you have any questions later. I hope you have been able to review all of our submittals. We sent you hard copies, a land use study, a letter from me dated June 3, as well as a neighborhood compatibility study from Jay Higgins. I only have 10 minutes, so I have a lot to cover. I do want to thank Kelly for doing a great job and making my job easier. I'll try to not linger on duplicate slides. I want to specifically thank Councilmember Funk for being gracious with her time and requesting a meeting with me to help her better understand our project and to Councilman Barbeau for his time at a site visit this week. This presentation is in response to the appeals that have been filed, and I will demonstrate that the Dove Creek Storage Project is fully compatible in both use and appearance with the surrounding community. Next slide. At this point, we all know the site, so I will move on to the next slide. And there's been a lot of discussion about public comment, which is quite important. I did want to put it in perspective, though, based on the number of people noticed. The people in orange are unique addresses that wrote, generally speaking, two letters per address. The green dots represent people that were in support. And basically, you had about two tenths of a percent of the noticed parties weigh in as of the May 5 meeting. Next slide. Want to talk about the surrounding neighborhood. These are some images of the apartments, churches, daycare and the liquor store. Next slide. As well as the single family and multifamily homes that are around this site. Next slide. This is a summary that I think is important. It was in my letter to you dated June 3. And I've been I had included several slides in that letter showing you the appearance of the and the zoning of existing storage facilities in Atascadero. And I think it's interesting that all of them are adjacent to residential neighborhoods. So what we're proposing here is not unique or out of the ordinary for the community of Atascadero. I'd also like to mention that Scott's two other storage facilities are Class B and C facilities. They are not representative of what we are proposing here tonight. I also want to mention that his facility in Napomo is only two years old, and it is located on industrial zone parcel. And as we all know, industrial zone parcels do not have the same landscape requirements that other parcels do. Next slide. Okay, this is the current landscape plan. So you'll see the landscape on El Camino Real that we just talked about that is moved fully out of the right of way, as well as the landscape at the back of Building E, which is also fully out of the right of way. Want to be certain that we all looking at the same thing here. The yellow area to the right is the pedestrian path from Viejo Camino to El Camino Real. At this time, the remaining triangle piece is not part of the project. It has doubled in size, though, from three quarters of an acre to an acre and a half due to the reduced storage project footprint. The drainage plan calls for substore subsurface storage rather than open basins. So we do expect that the proposed creek channel will provide the required riparian restoration rather than using the triangle area. But as Kelly noted, we won't know that until the hydrology report is revised again. The creek will have a dirt bottom and sides, and it will be vegetated along the berms to cover the retaining wall with additional landscape material. This will turn a ruined dry stream bed into a vibrant habitat. Next slide. This is some detail that is subject to the appeal, and we wanted to provide some extra detail about what's happening along Viejo Camino. This is the this is the plan that the planning commission had at their disposal at their hearing. We are proposing to put steel mesh lattice along the back of Building E with vines as well as shrubs and the street trees to to provide visual relief and screening. Next slide. This is just some images for you of what we're envisioning as far as the creek bed restoration, the path and some of the amenities that are provided. Next slide. We want to assure you that we've considered environmental design as our architect has gone through and produced this project for us. Next slide. These are some of the pictures of uses that are also allowed with a conditional use permit. They look rather residential, and it's kind of counterintuitive to what the permitted uses are, which we'll look at in just a moment. Next slide. Neighborhood compatibility is important, and just a reminder, this storage facility will have state of the art monitoring for entry and site security. Despite the concerns voiced by many, there will be no public workshop use or storage of hazardous materials. No one will be living in their unit. This facility will store items that you don't have room for at your home or apartment. Churches, nonprofits and sport teams need to store tables, chairs, stages, costumes, balls and bats and other items to support their mission. None of these are industrial uses. It's just stuff. Next slide. Now, talking about things that are permitted uses allowed by right. As I said, it's somewhat counterintuitive when you look at the appearance of these uses contrasted with the conditional uses. Some government examples would be putting Atascadero Middle School on this site based on its size and its massing, your library, City Hall. They would all be allowed structured without discretionary review. As you can see, many of these uses are just not compatible with the immediate neighborhood. Next slide. What we're proposing is a modern Class A storage facility. Currently, none exist in the city of Atascadero. Based on my review of the comment letters, there still seems to be some confusion about this project as well as uninformed opinions about how a business owner would neglect a multimillion dollar investment. We are proposing a project that is consistent with each of these design considerations to be compatible with the neighborhood. Next slide. Again, 77 trips a day is extremely low and is based on traffic counts. Based on Scott's experience at his other facilities, he believes it'll probably these numbers of 77 trips a day are on the high side. Next slide. Kelly had a slide that showed the difference between the two projects, and this is kind of more of a side by side. This slide shows the difference in the submittals. The project was redesigned because of your dislike for the perimeter block walls and the building massing as well as community feedback. There is a 32% reduction of self-storage square footage. We reduced the number of buildings, and the nine foot high CMU block walls were replaced with six foot tall black tubular fencing and screened with about two thirds of an acre of landscaping. Next slide. In order to be compatible with the neighborhood, we selected the agrarian design. We wanted to respect the semi-rural feeling of the area and achieve neighborhood compatibility through the use of architectural detail and roof designs consistent with the surrounding churches and apartments to complement the area and provide transition to the six surrounding zone districts. The DRC felt that the agrarian design is compatible with the surrounding neighborhood. Next slide. I believe we've talked about wetlands sufficiently, so I'd like to move on to my next slide, which you've already seen at some detail. However, I think having the building heights in the lower left hand corner of this slide perhaps are a little bit easier than trying to read the different labels on this particular exhibit. And I want to thank Councilman Barbeau. This was actually a genius idea for a slide. Next slide. This is a view from the south. I'm sorry, yes, this you've seen this view already, so I'm going to move on so I don't run out of time. Next slide. This is a view from El Camino Real contrasting the original project with the large block walls around the exterior versus the tubular steel with the landscaping. And this is looking east from El Camino Real. Next slide. This is Viejo Camino looking from the southwest. And next slide. In closing, if I drove by on El Camino Real, this looks like a school to me, which is a permitted use by right. Our goal is to provide a safe and secure Class A facility to serve this community. We hope that you find the project both compatible in appearance and use. The unique design concept does not appear to be a storage project due to the elevated design concepts, landscaping, high quality materials and color palette. It is unlike any other storage facility in the city. The project owner has made a considerable investment to make this project look and feel like a high end residential or commercial project without traffic impacts. We ask that you deny the appeal and uphold the approval of the planning commission. We're here to answer any questions you may have.
Your timing is impeccable and impressive, Ms. Romero.
Well, thank you, Mayor Moreno. I am a former mayor myself, and I am Chair of the Planning, the Park Commission in Santa Barbara County, so I definitely respect the process.
Thank you. So any of our council members with questions for the applicant? Councilmember Funk?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Romero. First, let me let me check. Could you bring back the the two the slide with the double cross sectionals? It's got that nice cross section of the swale that you sent to me and the, yes, thank you. And the site cross essential that you sent to Councilmember Barbeau. Looking at that, starting with the one on the swale, as we as we build up from from the am I am I correct in understanding that as I'm looking at the that the cross sectional at the numbers, that 914 is an elevation for the the top of Building D? So that if if the so that so that we would have 24 feet from the bottom of the swale to the top of Building B D?
You are correct. 914 is the ridge of Building D.
Okay, and then a portion of that would be attributable to its pitched roof.
Right, that's. At the very peak it is.
Yeah, okay. And then looking at that at the retaining wall that's on the roughly north side of the swale. As I was at the site, I was trying to do see that visualize it across, and it looks to me like it that it would be roughly the the same height as El Camino Real, because the street's elevated above the the current level of the landscape, and it goes over that big culvert. Can can you compare and that the other side is the retaining wall is high at the upstream end of the project as it is at the downstream end?
No, I do not believe that it is, but Locke is also watching, so maybe he can text me to confirm that I'm getting this right, or Scott can do that for me.
Okay, so basically, the question would be just, would we be correct, reasonable to assume that the retaining wall is roughly the height of El Camino Real and then goes across the project along that creek line and roughly the height of Viejo Camino on the downstream end?
I'm waiting for a text.
Bring Locke on as a as a panelist. Do you think that would be helpful?
That would be great.
Okay, why don't why don't we do that? So if there's questions that Locke might be able to answer. So Luke, if we could pull on Locke, who's rate who has a raised hand, so make it easy to find.
I have a reply that says the retaining wall is actually lower than El Camino Real by about 24 inches and the same level on Viejo Camino.
Okay, great.
Okay.
Thank you. That that helps helps me see it as it goes across. And then I had let me pass on further questions right now. Check my notes and see if there are additional ones that I have for you.
Thank you. Mayor Potemnison.
Where how much public outreach was conducted with this project plan?
Well, that might actually be a better question for Scott, but what he did go door to door. I don't know what the radius of his door to door efforts were. I'm sure I'll have that in just a moment by text. He's kind of a hands on guy when it comes to projects.
Scott wants to raise his hand and answer that question, too. That's fine. I see Locks there ready for any questions as well. So I see Mr. Newton's raised his hand, so if we want to bring him on to give that answer, that'd be great. Mr. Newton, can you hear us?
I can hear you.
All right.
Can you hear me?
Yeah, I can hear you now.
So, yeah, so I went to every door in La Paloma and then went at. and then went at numerous meetings with the Dove Creek residents as well. And then organized probably about four different meetings at La Paloma Park to meet with different residents of the neighboring community. And then we had a person go to every apartment. Go door-to-door to all the surrounding apartments as well, to get their feedback.
Okay, so you're saying that you did neighborhood meetings. When were those conducted?
They'd been a mixture between the last project after the appeal, all the way to about thirty days ago.
And then, can we go back to the slide where Francis, you had indicated the responses? Just lost audio on you.
Can you clarify what slide again, Heather?
The slide that indicates the responses prior to the planning commission. It's got the dots with the orange and the green dots.
Yeah, that's slide three. Slide three. There we go.
These were comments submitted to planning commission.
These were, these were the public comment letters that were submitted as of the hearing on May fourth, so it is just a snapshot in time. We did not do this for the current letters due to the nature of them just kind of coming in up until the last minute.
Okay, and then, did you do any tracking of community feedback during those public outreach for neighborhood meetings?
Can you still hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so when I met with the different parties, no, there was no tracking. The most tracking we did is we put on this slide here. And the reason for making this slide was, is a number of residents wrote multiple letters. One resident wrote five different letters. And so this was more to demonstrate that the total volume didn't actually represent that many residents overall. But I will say that when I did meet with people face-to-face, I didn't face any opposition where they're still vehemently against it, once they understood the project.
Some of the community has suggested that some of the supporting letters came from those outside of Tascadero. Are you aware of that, or do you take that into consideration on some of your feedback?
Well, this image here shows the ones that are in the vicinity. So I can't be aware of any letters that came from outside the area, but these are ones that came in with addresses that were submitted to the planning commission.
Thank you, Scott.
Thanks.
Other questions of the applicant? Come on, Councilmember Barbeau. Don't pretend you have nothing.
Sure, sure. Let me make sure I understand. I think it relates to a question that Councilmember Funk asked already though, but that is Building E, the one along Viejo Camino, that is, the base of that building is actually a little below the street. So the height of the building relative to the street, you know what that would be? Or does maybe Locke, Solder Quest, your architect know that?
I think it's eight feet, but since I've got the benefit of having Locke here.
Hi, everybody. This is Locke Soderquist, architect with LSA Architects. Thank you for taking the time to review this project again, and I'd be happy to answer that question. There's a site section that, actually, I don't think I made it on one of the slides, but there is a section through that through Building E as it relates to Viejo Camino. And looking at that section, the elevation is approximately, the elevation change is approximately what Francis says, about eight feet.
And one other question for you then, on that cross-section slide we've looked at occasionally here. You know, it starts with the dome house overlay on the top and goes down to the, the waterway, the water, where the water would flow. I, I asked of staff, you know, what the, that the gray, the light gray color was where the fill would be. Can you be specific in terms of, yes, in this, on this slide here, that the light gray area is, represents the fill? And which doesn't look like a lot to me, but I'm no judge of that. What is the maximum amount of fill that's occurring?
Yeah, the maximum depth of fill is right in front of Building B, and that's approximately seven feet.
Okay, and then as you run out towards, you know, under Building C and D, is it then like four feet, maybe, or what is that?
It's about, yeah, about four feet.
Okay, so that would, yeah, we're not, we're not talking ten or fifteen feet of fill or something. Okay, all right, thank you.
Other questions of the applicant? Councilmember Funk.
Yes, if you can keep it on the same slide for a moment. Could you point to us on this slide with these buildings, the locations of rolled doors? With the sides of buildings, the, the sides that would have rolled doors? Okay, so the north side of Building D.
Locke, correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think there would be any rolled doors along any of those elevations as pictured.
Well, the backside of Building D, or the south side of Building D does not have rolled doors. It has access ways for, like pedestrian access ways, not pedestrians, but human access ways to access internal doors. And then the, let me just, let me switch over to the elevations just a moment.
Right, they won't be facing us, obviously, but they're, they're on this, the
Yeah, internally, the units, all the buildings have roll-up doors internally, but the exterior facades do not have roll-up doors. And the, actually so Building B, I, I switched over to the elevation sheets that are in kind of the drawing set that was sent out. So Building B on the lower side has roll-up doors, and the upper side of Building B has roll-up doors. And then Building C has no roll-up doors on the sides. It only has pedestrian access, or not pedestrian, but client access hallways into internal storage units that have roll-up doors on the inside that are accessed through corridors, basically through the building, and the same with Building D. So, yeah, so, so the, the units that have roll-up doors on the sides of the units is Building A, or Building B. There's a portion of them on the upper level that's adjacent to Building A. And then on the lower part of that building, as you drive down the driveways on either side, the bottom part of that building has roll-up doors. And then the other buildings, Buildings C and D, there's no roll-up doors on the outsides of the buildings. There's just a corridor through the buildings to access internal units. And then Building E, the backside of that, that faces Viejo Camino, the front side of that has roll-up doors that face into the, into the storage access drive.
So, sounds like that any areas of the project that have the rolled doors have, have visual blocking of them, basically by other buildings in the project. You know, we're not worried about looking all the way across the project.
Yeah, well, yeah, we, we basically, the, the buildings that were most visible, we purposely eliminated the roll-up doors on the exterior facades and just created the corridors through the buildings for access to the, to the storage units.
Okay, thanks.
I, I, once again, I'm gonna follow on with Councilmember Funk's question, because this is sort of a revelation for me. I'm looking at this big set of plans that I think each of the council members receive. So, I'm looking at, this is elevation for Building C, for example. And so in this drawing, not showing very well here, but these little, you know, white rectangles, those are doors that then lead to internal storage unit. And so, the typical, what we have in mind of, you know, the storage, you know, storage building with tons of roll-up doors, there'll be a little bit of that on the downside of Building B. And on the inside, not the straight side of Building E, but the rest of them are gonna be like, you know, these, I guess not roll-up, but open doors, and then you go into your unit. Is that right?
Correct, yeah. If you look at the big roll, the big plant set that was provided to you, those are pedestrian, or those are access corridors through the buildings to access internal units.
Which also then, I mean, I'm just curious, that means, I mean, if I pull up with a truckload of stuff, I'm gonna, I, I can't just roll up a big door and throw it in there, I'm gonna have to you know, get it out, get it through this door, which is four or six feet wide or something, right, and then take it to my, my storage unit? Is that how that would work?
Yeah, it's, it's five feet wide, so there'll be a cart that you unload your goods onto, and then you push it down the corridor and right next to your door, and then roll it up and unload.
So that limits the size of things that people can put in these storage units then, doesn't it?
It does.
All right. Thank you. Glad Councilmember Funk asked for that clarification.
Mayor Protim Newsom.
I'm gonna ask for one more clarification as we're leading into that conversation. Right behind Building A on our big plans, it says there's a parking lot. The parking lot then has full access in it. The roll-up doors are viewable for Building B through that parking lot. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah. There's, so that parking lot was expanded to accommodate the, what was originally like a shared workspace and then became assembly. And we're, we're actually proposing to reduce the parking there, but we, we didn't have time to modify it, you know, prior to this meeting. But that was comments, those were comments that were brought up in the last meeting that the parking could be reduced at Building A. And if that's the case, we would probably go back to a similar configuration we had before with single-loaded parking. And that would enable us to put a, a wider landscape peninsula in front of those doors and, and screen those from the parking lot.
So as it sits right now, you can see into, if doors were to be open, roll-up doors on Building B, you could see that from Viejo Camino?
No.
Correct.
Through the parking? Because the parking is open.
You would look down the driveway, yeah. If you look down, there's landscaping around the perimeter, but if you look down the driveway, you would be able to see them.
Okay, yeah, because there's open space right there with the parking. Charles, I think it's page, it's so hard with the big plans. You used to be able to just look over and share it on its page.
Yeah, I see.
Other big plans.
Yeah, I see it, but I mean, there's, there would be landscaping on the parking lot. And if you were walking, you might see it, but if you were driving, you probably wouldn't, I guess, because the, you'd only see it through the opening of the driveway and in between the trees in the building. Is that correct?
Kelly, can you pull up the landscaping design for that? Can you see it in there?
Slide your landscaping is on? So you can find it quickly.
Because we talk as the landscaping develops, I mean, in the beginning, it's gonna be a little bit of bare bones as trees grow. If anybody's got it.
So, the parking lot has super minimal setbacks, like Locke was saying, sort of along this area here and this area here, so there's not much screening. But because they got rid of the community room, there's potential to eliminate some of this parking and put in additional landscaping.
Okay, and then the property that is to the left of that on the screen is all currently vacant. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah. So there'd be transparent fencing along the property line that you'd be able to see through at certain angles.
Okay, and that abuts to the property that is on commercial neighborhood lots. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
So, Councilwoman, or Councilman Newsom, I'm sorry. I just had one more comment. I just got a text from Scott, and he, and he had mentioned that he had planned to change those to internal access at the top of Building B, just because that's our main entrance, and we have, he doesn't want vehicles stopping at that location. So actually those, I mean, as it's shown now, yes, there's roll-up doors there, but Scott's intention is to eliminate those roll-up doors and have that entire upper level access with carts with internal units.
So that would need to be a condition if we wanted to adopt it that way.
Appreciate that additional feedback.
Right. I do have one. Sorry, Councilmember Dara is followed by Councilmember Funk.
Thank you. Just one quick question, and this could be for Scott or Locke. On vehicles that's gonna be coming in, I, I think it was clarified a moment ago that, as Charles said, that oh, you're not gonna be able to bring in a whole bunch of big stuff into these things. So on, on the vehicles, I think there's a lot of concern by the neighbors on big trucks coming in and bringing their wares to, to store. How will you regulate? I mean, I mean, I would hate to see somebody try to bring in a big truck and then get stuck, but what's, how is this gonna be controlled? In terms of, I don't know who's gonna answer, in, in terms of, you know, notifying the renters or whatnot, but if you could just address the, the vehicle, and maybe a history of what you're, what you're expecting on something like this. Scott or something.
Okay.
There you go.
Okay. So the facility can actually handle a very large vehicle across, because it's required to be able to handle a fire truck through it. So with the size of a fire truck, it's greater than any delivery-type truck we would ever see from a furniture or, you know, moving company.
Oh, okay, all right, well, that's good to know. Then I didn't expect, I didn't think about a fire truck, and that would be a requirement for something like this, so if a full-size fire truck can make it through here, then I guess people, we shouldn't have too much of an issue with the truck, and maybe a small trailer even if they needed to. So, all right, thank you, that's all I got.
While we're on trucks and on this slide, can you talk about, as people clean out their units, there's, you know, you might, you might have a substantial amounts of trash at various points. Can you indicate where the trash, where's trash pickup and where the garbage, where the trash truck goes? And, and the visibility of the trash bins?
Mike, Locke, do you want me to speak to that? Or can you hear me? The, the trash cans would be located to the north of Building E, and they would be screened out by a CMU block wall, so they would only be visible from inside the facility.
Okay, so on that, that Viejo Camino face, the, the wall, if you will, for the, the, instead of a fence, the Building E itself is the wall. And then that, the surface of Building E would be extended out further north to create shielding of the trash bins?
That is correct.
Okay, and how high would that be?
Yeah, I'm just gonna make an assumption, but I'm gonna guess about five feet high. Just enough to screen, you know, the trash receptacles.
Okay, and then there would be, and there's still room for landscaping in front of that?
Correct, because Building E is a lot deeper than what would be required for the trash receptacles.
Ah, okay. And then that connects to gate or fencing there at the, at the front of the project? Where, where, where's the, the secured entry, entry gate?
Okay, so there's two gates. There's a secure entry and a secure exit. So, yeah, there's the entry gate, and that one's the exit.
Ah, okay, so one-way circulation around the project.
That is correct.
Okay. And then, could you go back to the slide that has the artist's rendering of the Southern View? Okay, so what, and what I want to ask about is the landscaping here. So we're looking, are you proposing to irrigate the landscaping in the open se- section of the, the section that the, the planning commission designated as opens, with an open space easement?
Go ahead, Marina.
Councilmember Funk through the chair. This was a rendering that was updated from the, the original appeal, and we updated it with the buildings and the associated landscaping at the back of the buildings. This triangle, this was the former appearance of the mitigation area minus the trees that are out there. I don't, I never understood why the trees were there. Basically, this is not, this is not part of our project. Basically, this is not, this is not part of our project, we have no landscape plan for this area, and there is no irrigation planned. We have to go through the FEMA and other permitting processes to find out whether or not we're going to need to utilize this area for the repair and restoration. We think we're gonna be able to do all of it in the creek channel, but at this point, it's, we have not made final plans, so we, we don't, we don't know what this area would actually look like.
I can add to that a little bit, this is Locke. If I may, so the street trees on the left-hand side will be there. And, and, and the vegetation up against the buildings, that's like true to form or true to the landscape plan, more or less. But yes, we scrambled to generate this rendering before the meeting so that we could show you this view, but we did not have time to have the renderer update the site. So this, the, the new buildings were placed on the other site with additional trees in front of the buildings. It represents very closely what we'd be doing there, other than what you see in the foreground, that, that vegetation was part of that previous presentation that, where we had the retention basin and kind of the restoration area in that area.
And I think it's important to, I'm sorry, to note that that area is three quarter, was three quarters of an acre, and it's now an acre and a half, so the, the perspective on what you're seeing in the foreground is probably also skewed.
Okay, and then the, the street trees, would I understand that those are gonna be a little back, back a little closer to the building, so that if El Camino Real has to widen, that there's still room for them? And do they come as far down as, as we're seeing here?
The street tree, the, yeah, the extent of the street trees will be determined by planning, really. And by, I guess, the approval process. Originally, we had street trees all the way down to the end of El Camino. We since then decided to separate that parcel, you know, to create the more organic pathway for the water, creating a larger parcel that could be used potentially for future development. And we considered that not part of this project, so that's why we pushed the street trees and the right-of-way improvements back to that, you know, the location that you see in the, in the latest site plan and landscape plan. So it just really depends on where we land, you know, with the requirements from planning.
Okay, and so the front of this would look rather more like the current landscape, which is obviously not irrigated except for naturally rain.
That is, that is correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I would ask, we had a conversation about the Bridwell property next door, and Councilmember Wolf had brought up possibility of, you know, working with them on fencing, I'm wondering, have you had any conversations with them? I know we have received emails that they're not particularly in favor of the project, but I am curious when it comes to them sort of like facing, you know, essentially a wall, have you had a conversation about what would be possible there and maybe what their preference might be?
I can speak to that. I have met with them about three different times, and I have not spoken to them about the actual fencing there, because, you know, in the beginning, they were more receptive to the development, now they're not. So naturally, the conversations are more limited. But I will tell you, the reason for that retaining wall, that's about 24 inches high, the CMU block, it's not required for flood protection. I actually am going through the extra expense to do that, to help provide them extra protection from the 100-year flooding. So, you know, trying to be a good neighbor on it, but I have no problem putting whatever type of fencing they, they select for it. If they want wrought iron, solid, I'm open to what they prefer.
Got it, thank you. All right, do we have any other questions of the applicant right now?
All right, seeing none. Thank you very much, Ms. Ramaral, Mr. Sotekris, Mr. Newton, we appreciate you being here. We'll certainly, you know, probably could have more questions at the end of this. So what I'm gonna do right now is I'm going to have us take a brief break, we've been sitting here for two hours and 15 minutes. So why don't we take a, let's take a 10-minute break, and we will come back at 8:25, and now a nine-minute break, and we will go into public comment, so be back at 8:25 and we'll begin, thanks. All right, we are at 8:25. And so if we could come back together. Right. We're still just waiting for Councilmember Funk to come back on camera.
I left a lollaberry pie unattended.
That sounds really good right now, actually, that's my favorite, I love those.
I know, I skipped the ice cream, just, just, you know, I didn't eat that in front of both of you, or all of you.
I love those Lynn's little, the little lollaberry pies.
That's what it is.
Oh, I knew it.
Found your weakness.
Yeah, lies are my weakness, totally.
Those, oh, good, to reduce the hands. All right, so we've just returned back from a, a break, and now we're gonna go on to public comment. And let me give a little bit of just information about what is useful during this process. Now, we've received a lot, a lot of comments. Again, many, many against, we have, you know, a handful that are, that are in favor. I have noticed multiple ones from some of the same individuals, and then many others that have just singularly wrote it on their own. What I want to say is this, there are some, there are some things that, even though you as a resident may think something's important to you, you are welcome to say it to us, but you need to know that we can't take it into consideration. So for instance, the fact that there are already seven storage units in town, as many of the emails have said, that doesn't enter into our deliberation on whether to uphold this appeal or to, to proceed with the project. Okay. It also isn't helpful to say that, you know, this has been open space and it's rural and we enjoy this open space. We don't control that it stays open space. So if somebody owns this property, and whether it's Mr. Newton or somebody else, somebody has every right to come along and build it. Now, yes, this is a conditionally allowed use, and that's what we're discussing in these seven findings that we have to meet. But talking about how it's this lovely open space isn't useful to tonight's conversation. So I really want to steer you towards those seven findings in the conversation, and particularly new information, things that we have not heard before. Okay, you're welcome to say anything you want, I'm simply trying to say, let's go through this in a way that really leads to more information, things that we don't already know, and something that's pertinent to the discussion this evening. Okay, so with that, I will look to the hands that are raised. You can raise your hand in the webinar, and if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. And we will have the timer running, you'll have three minutes, up to three minutes to speak. I will let you know too, that if somebody before you has already said what you want to say, you can simply come on and say, I agree with speaker, you know, number three, or speaker, you know, Mr. Jones, Ms. Jones. You don't need to reiterate everything that they have said. Again, we're looking for what's useful, we're not looking for length of time. So feel free to just say, I'm in agreement, we'll note that, and then we'll move on. So with that, if you're on the webinar, you can raise your hand, and if you're on the phone, you can press star nine. So I'll go in the order of who I see here, I see a Susan Riojas. If you would like to come on, you will be our first speaker for public comment.
Hi, I'm Susan Riojas, and we've lived in our house on La Paloma Court since 1995, and I just wanted to say, you've already said that, it's not important or anything, but just looking at the open space is really nice in this neighborhood. And the one thing I was concerned about before is the flooding of the park when it rains a lot. It, it kind of floods the park, so that's all I wanted to say, thank you. It, it kind of floods the park. So that's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Riojas. And I do want to be clear. I appreciate what Ms. Riojas said. It's not that I don't think it's important. I recognize when something for the public that it's important to you. I'm talking about what's germane to our decision and what we can take into account when we're looking at our decision tonight. So that's, I want to be clear on that. I don't want to tell you what you think isn't important because of course each of us have to us what we think is important. So I see Colleen Anis.
What's changed since the appeal in 2019? The footprints reduced by 10%. There's still storage units and still wrong for this location. The general plan stresses orderly, appropriate growth in neighborhoods and the use of open space to provide protection of waterways and wetlands in their natural state and prevent flooding. It's possible to build on these lots without destroying the creek and wetlands, just not a 62,000 square foot commercial complex. Nor does it need to be the shooting range, electrical towers, high density housing, or in their words, warehouse suggested by the developers rep or some planning commissioners. These three acres of buildings up to 25 feet tall, rising above retaining walls up to five feet tall will loom over the neighborhood visible from all sides. Roll up doors will be seen as you drive north on El Camino. Look at building B on the south elevation. Turn lanes don't alter the fact that you're routing large moving trucks driven by tired amateurs down a very narrow road filled with children and bicycles and over narrow bridges. It's already Mr. Toad's ride at the north end of Viejo Camino without this. Will larger trees, different plants, your fancy roofs make a difference? If you must. Are you, can you hear me?
Oh, yeah, you just bleeped out for a moment. You're back.
Okay, will larger trees or different plants or fancy roofs make a difference? If you must work that hard hoping to disguise what this is, it doesn't belong and it won't be disguised. I've sent pictures of this crown jewel. They're clearly storage units. Once you approve storage, more will follow along with junkyards, graffiti and cannabis shops. Would any of you or Mr. Newton choose to leave next to this, live next to this? I strongly encourage the city council to disapprove this project. It's not in keeping with the general plan, the character of our neighborhood or its orderly development. It generates very little money, essentially no jobs. It doesn't need a need. It's unsafe, but most importantly, it's damaging to our natural resources. Wetlands and waterways are easily ruined and mistakes once made cannot be undone. Again, I encourage you to look at building B on the south elevation despite all the confusion. Roll up doors will be seen there. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Anis. Dennis Mitch, I'm going to try my best with your last name, McNewick, McNeak? Dennis, you'll need to unmute yourself. Dennis, you appear to be unmuted, but we're not hearing you. If you want to maybe take a moment to work out your audio. And why don't we, why don't we go to Camille O'Brien?
Hi, good evening, council members and mayor and all the people from the staff and the planning commission as well as anybody else that's here, the applicant. I appreciate everybody's due diligence in this process. I live at 9315 La Paloma Court. I've been a resident of Atascadero since 1999. I lived on Tiburon Circle right across from the Atascadero, the U Store, storage place. I also lived up in the north end of Atascadero, the Colony Homes, just across the street from another storage facility. And so the biggest concerns I've had from the time I heard about this initial project and it's a first application in 2019. And even now with the revised information that was shared this evening, I, no one has to my satisfaction at least described the ways in which possible changes to Viejo Camino are not going to result in some road hazards and traffic hazards. We have blind spots already turning in and out of La Paloma Court as well as turning in and out of the Bordeaux Apartments or Mayor Vista, the apartments on the corner of El Comino Real and Viejo Camino. And so without any kind of pictures or renderings or more clarity around how those extra turning pockets, whatever you call them, are going to make a difference. I, I envision it's gonna, I don't want to see one kid on their way to school or catch a school bus, get crunched by a car. The way they stacked up, especially during rush hour. The other thing is, one of the representatives for the applicant said that they had talked to all the residents on La Paloma Court and invited us to community meetings. That's absolutely not true. I've not had a note. I've not had a knock. I've not had a phone call. So I really am quite disturbed by their false representation of their due diligence in vetting this proposal, proposed project. And I agree with everything that Ms. Anne said and everything that I've seen in the agenda in the packet. I'm not going to rehash all the concerns that have already been reported or said. I just wanted you all to know that I'm not in favor, as a longtime resident of Atascadero, a person that has stuff in storage at U Store and of this project. This is not compatible with the current area and the community. I don't think it makes sense to move creeks that are naturally occurring. And I just don't know how viable this is when I hear people on city council saying or the people from the staff saying, it's likely that X or Y or Z won't happen. It's probable that X or Y or Z won't happen. You all didn't even know when our houses were built on La Paloma Court. So that's all I have to say right now. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. O'Brien. I will go back to Dennis. If you're able to work your audio, we would love to hear from you. Okay, you're showing as muted. If you're able to unmute. Okay, Dennis, if we can't hear you, I'm going to give you an option. You can stay on the webinar, but you could also dial 805-538-2888. Let me give that to you again and to any of you, if you're having problems with the audio, 805-538-2888. So you could stay on the line, but then call in and you can speak on this item. So we can do it that way. I want to make sure you're able to speak. So I'll go on to Amarena Anchor.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, great. Hi, all. My name is Amarena Anchor and I'm a resident of Los Lomas. I'd like to state from the record, my objection to this project due to being inconsistent with the neighborhood. I know the definition of immediate neighborhood was questioned tonight. However, I'd like to suggest that since this project is adjacent to the primary sports field for all Atascadero residents, this concept of immediate neighborhood should be expanded further than a project would be in a different part of town. Additionally, this lot is at the south gateway of Atascadero and thus deserves greater consideration of neighborhood compatibility than any other area of the city. To my, to that point, Mrs. Gleason's presentation confirmed that this project is surrounded on three sides by neighborhood and the northern border being zoned for commercial neighborhood, which would not allow a mini storage. It would eventually be developed with projects compatible with the nearby neighborhoods. To answer Mrs. Funk's question about the zoning of the southern section of El Comino Real, it confirmed my concern that Zone P would apply and receipt of a conditional use permit here would create even more opportunity for mini storage along that gateway corridor. We want ourself gateway full of mini storage. Mr. Bobo explained, sorry if I pronounced that wrong, expressed concern about the landscaping not being compatible of growing quickly enough to screen the buildings based on his experience with older developments in the city. I second his concern. As for the developers' presentation and comments, Mrs. Romero's comment regarding a middle school or library being allowed without conditional use as if that's a bad thing, showed exactly the developer's misunderstanding, understanding of what is best for families that live in the area. I believe everyone would support a school site or a library adjacent to existing homes, the public park and existing public transportation at the site. Just because Mrs. Romero stated that the front building would look like a school doesn't mean it serves the neighborhood in the same way a school or a library would. Mr. Newton does not appear to have the concern or needs of the residents as south of Tascamero at heart. He stated he hasn't met with a single person who opposes the project after meeting with him, when in fact his own comments admit that the colony homeowners are not in support of this project after meeting with him. I can state I've been very active in opposing this project for the reasons stated previously and I was never invited to a meeting, nor have I had any person I know be invited to the meeting. So at most, at minimum, his comments are disingenuous. At most, they're intentionally misleading. In summary, this project doesn't fit the neighborhood and no amount of screening will hide the fact that these are storage units right in the middle of a residential neighborhood. Thank you for your time. I hope you vote to decline the use of this piece of land that has a special location at Atascadero's gateway and can provide for much more for Atascadero residents.
Thank you, Ms. Anchor. Next I see Barack Miles.
Good evening, mayor and city council. My name is Barack Miles. I've been a resident of Atascadero and went to high school here since 1985. I'm a project manager for the state and I worked for the city of Atascadero from numerous projects. I understand that this project has been a subject to a great deal of attention and in fact probably way more than it should have received. You know, I'm not sure why this is, but all I can guess is that many have judged it based on their perception of self-storage and I think it's unfair that we assume the worst just because other self-storage facilities are in such poor quality or in appearance here in Atascadero. Take for instance, if, if maybe a Four Seasons, like a five-star hotel came and we didn't want, and we didn't want them to build here, we wouldn't oppose it just because it's based on the way the motels that we have here look. So it would be ridiculous to judge a proposed project or business based on what we have conditionally here. So the Dove Creek self-storage should not be held to be flawed to us based on this standard. So I ask that you judge this project based on its own merits versus preconceived perceptions about self-storage. And here's what I know is we all agree that the design and the architecture and landscaping actually looks, looks quite amazing. And I believe that this is the best use of the land, which has limited allowable uses due to its zoning. The applicants have done a great job of making it compatible with the area. Will it blend in with the neighboring liquor store that's been there for years and, and really is an eyesore? I doubt it. It's a lot classier than that. Will it create traffic like the surrounding apartment complexes? Not even close. Will it create noise and traffic like the sporting events at the, at the park? I seriously doubt it. It will be attractive. As I travel, I see many new self-storage facilities that are located in the best parts of towns and residential neighborhoods throughout the county. The common thing among them is that they are first-class facilities. Other cities recognize that services should be located where they are most needed. We should encourage high-quality development like this and hope that competition makes the older facilities update their appearances. And my last point is about the discussion that the self-storage belongs in our industrial areas. This is actually one of the worst places for them. We shouldn't give up our job creation areas that were intended for high negative impact businesses that generate lots of noise, have poor aesthetics and generate commercial truck traffic for benign use like self-storage. I ask you, you make the best decision for our city and deny the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miles. Next speaker, we have just an initial M-E-A. I don't know if that's NEA or if those are initials.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
That's Nancy Ayers. I don't know how the NEA got. Anyway, I, I'm a resident of Atascadero also, I lived here for almost 16 years. I agree with everything that Ms. Anne, Ms. O'Brien and Ms. Anchor have said so far. I'd also like to point out a couple of additional things. This is substantially the same project that was properly denied by the city council in September of 2019. It's incompatible with the neighborhood then and it's still incompatible with the neighborhood. The basis of the the project has not changed. The nature of the project has not changed. It's only slightly smaller than it was before, but it's still half the size of the Atascadero State Hospital. Imagine that sitting where the dome home does now. The dome home, Mr. Barbosa said that was comparing the elevations of the dome home and the Paloma Creek or Paloma courthouse's. While they may be about the same height, the dome home sits up on a much higher elevation of land so that th- this project will be considerably taller if you take into account the height of the land that it's going to be placed on. And then Ms. Romero said that only things that are going to be in the storage unit is going to be stuff from people's households. There's no way to enforce that. There's no way to say what people are going to put in there. They're going to be coming in at whatever hours they want, putting their stuff in there with no supervision. Anything could be put in those storage units, including things that could be dangerous to the neighborhood. I would like to point out that I believe that this is inconsistent with the general plan, calling for orderly development of the gateway to the city. It's inconsistent with the neighborhood. It's going to involve major reconstruction of the wetland and the Blue Line Creek. And I'm concerned about erosion and flooding downstream. I bought my house in reliance on the reasonable expectation that the city would abide by its own rules and regulations and the general plan to preserve the character of the neighborhood and to protect my investment. I've spent hundreds of thousands of dollars on my home. And I would like to see that the neighborhoods remain the same character as it is now. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Next I see Sally Dexter Smith.
Hi, I'm Sally Dexter Smith. Live on La Paloma Court where we purchased our home in 2017. And I can see right down the street into that area. So one of my concern, my first concern is that no, I never did speak to Mr. Newton. He never came and knocked on my door or invited me to a community meeting. So I have not had any communication with him or was I invited to? As Ms. Romero is saying that the mini storage areas are not just in commercial industrial areas. They are also in residential areas in Atascadero. But all of them, all of them are in commercial industrial areas at except this one has going, is going to be residential on three sides. So it's completely surrounded by homes other than the neighborhood commercial zoned empty lot. I think having a mini storage area in this really visible piece of property that's potentially a useful public zoned parcel, which is for public use and could be the general plan requires that the use of property be the best use. And I think that a mini storage area in this very visible part of our city is not the best use. And I would be happy to get behind a public use that would benefit those of us who live in the area and the whole city of Atascadero. The fact that there is no fence on building E now and the wall is going to be the fence, I think it just is going to be inviting graffiti. And it does not look like a school. It's a blank wall. So to try and compare this to a school building, I don't think is, is quite right. There will be blank walls that are not softened by windows or doors or things that make it look more like a residential area building. And finally, I would just say that this property was purchased with the usage in mind that was a gamble. And that usage remains an outlier in use and scope for this neighborhood. And I would ask that you please retain the integrity of the general plan and planned use and conservation blueprint by denying this, I mean by approving this appeal.
Thank you, Ms. Dexter, Dexter Smith. I will ask Luke now, are, do we have callers on the phone that would like to speak?
Yes, we have several tonight. Our first caller is Janet Marietta.
Can you hear me?
Can.
Okay. Hi, good evening, Jan, Janet Marietta, and I live at La Paloma Court. And there are several reasons I am opposed to this project and really wanted to focus my allotted time on the findings, which we've all know what they are. We've all talked about them. So I'm not going to go into all the detail of that. I will say with the La Paloma neighbors that have already spoken and said that they have not been contacted by Mr. Newton, I am also one of those neighbors. I've never received a letter, a phone call, a knock on my door, nothing. So I am a little surprised by that comment. I also want to address Ms. Romero's statement about the seventy-seven trips a day. This pertains to item number five in the findings, that says beyond normal traffic volume. Seventy-seven trips a day is seventy-seven more trips a day than we currently have. So that definitely is beyond normal traffic volume. In September 2019, the city council voted this project did not meet requirements. Number four, I believe, was the actual required, the finding. But ultimately, they denied the project from moving forward. The overall scope of this project has not changed. Simply put, it is still a mini-storage facility being dropped down right in the middle of an established neighborhood. I am hopeful that the city council will once again deny this project based on these findings. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Marietta. Next caller, please.
Our next caller is Stephen Davis.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. My name is Stephen Davis, and I am opposed to this project. It's located on a seasonal wetland and in a flood hazard zone. It opposes environmental risks and, and impacts for the surrounding neighborhood. Also, it's inconsistent with the current development in the area, and it will have detrimental effects on the surrounding community. So I believe this project should be not, should be denied. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Bill Marietta.
Hello?
We can hear you.
Okay, I'm just going to be very succinct. I am oppositionally opposed to this project. I have submitted a letter, and my opposition is in the letter, and that is all I have to say.
Thank you, sir. Luke, next caller, please.
Our next caller is Rosemary Dexter.
Yes, yes, I'm right here.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, my name is Rosemary Dexter. I'm a member of the Methodist Church, which is located adjacent to the property that's being considered for this storage unit. My husband was the original pastor of this church, and that was over forty years ago, so I've been here for a good long time. And I can tell you that I have enjoyed that pastoral scene in that area for all those years, and it just breaks my heart to think of it becoming a sea of rooftops and roads when viewed from the hill on which the church is located. I think Atascadero will need more open spaces as it becomes larger. Ideally, that property could or should become a part of the city's recreational and green spaces. But if that's not possible, then it should be something put in there that is more compatible to the area. And of course, one last thought is the waterway. Atascadero is not supposed to be inhibiting or changing the waterways, and that will happen if this building plan goes on. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Dexter. Luke, our next caller, please.
Our next caller is Steve Maloney.
Yes, yes, can you hear me?
You can.
Yes, okay, so I'm calling as a new resident to Atascadero. I moved into a new development at C.O. Robles, which is just up the street on Viejo Camino. Disturbed to hear that this development is under consideration, and I would like to back Ms. Pauline's comments with regards to why this appeal should be approved and the project should be denied. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Maloney. Let's bring on our next caller, Luke.
Our next caller is Daniel Neely. It's possible he's just wanting to listen, but we'll give it a shot.
Okay. Mr. Neely, are you there?
Yes, I'm just in for a listen tonight.
All right, thank you. Bring in our next caller, Luke, and I don't know, do you, wondering if you see Dennis in the queue? I'm hoping that he was able to call in since we couldn't hear him on the webinar, but.
Yeah, he did not call into the public call line, and that is all the callers I have in the queue.
Okay. So I do have a couple more in the webinar, and I will say, Daniel, if you're listening, if you're still on here, or not Daniel, sorry, that was the wrong number, no, I'm Dennis. Eight oh five five three eight two eight eight, you can call in. Let's see, let's go to Anna King.
Heather, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
My name's Anna King. I live in the Dome House, and I just want to agree with Mr. Hall on approving the project and denying the appeal. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, is there anyone else? I'm seeing a hand raised on the phone, Luke. Is there someone still there?
No, sorry, let me get that hand down.
Okay. Is there anyone in the webinar wishing to speak? I don't see any hands currently, so I want to make sure there's no one intending to speak that hasn't yet. So I just saw, okay. I have a Rob Fell and Camille, where we're only bringing on speakers who haven't spoken already. So if you've already spoken, we're going to all to new speakers. So we'll go to Rob Fell and then V. Pierce.
There we go. Hi there.
Hold on, hold on, we've got a echo on you. Luke, do you know what that might be? Is that on his end or something on our end?
Is that better?
Yes, much better.
Sorry. I, I just, I'm having a hard time understanding what's different now than from the past. It's a large metal building in the middle of a neighborhood. It doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. I don't, I don't know why we have to keep going through this. I live on La Paloma Court along with my neighbors. They've all been saying the same thing. Been kind of communicating back and forth. None of us have ever been talked to about this from the applicant at all. I don't know where that came from. Maybe he's talking to somebody in a different neighborhood, but nobody from my street that I know of has ever talked to him. Anyway, I just don't see the need for this big metal building in the middle of our neighborhood. I think it's just gonna just take away from the whole community. So that's my opinion. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Fell. V. Pierce.
Hi, good evening. I'm V. Pierce, and I will keep my comments brief because I've already submitted my letter. However, however, I feel that it's important for you to hear my voice and know that my neighbors and I are here speaking up, however imperfectly, imperfectly, because of the importance of this decision, and we know it's not an easy decision. The Planning Commission and Design Review Committee all had split votes. But I feel that it's important to note that self-storage can't be easily converted to any other uses. So your decision is a long-term decision for our, for our community. Our community is the southern gateway to the city of Atascadero. We want smart growth that showcases the welcoming, walkable, active, and beautiful community that we live in. We want people to stop and enjoy its natural beauty and amenities instead of becoming just another part of Atascadero that we just drive by. So I urge you to deny a conditional use permit because a self-storage facility does not fit with the character of our neighborhood and would not lead to orderly development. It does not follow the Atascadero, it does not follow Atascadero's general plan of smart growth to best serve and develop our community. Thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you, Ms. Pierce. We'll go on to Harland and Klaus.
Yes. Thank you. I have the PowerPoint that you have available.
Luke, do you have a PowerPoint for?
Yes, let me share it right now.
If you could keep the timer going as well, just so we make sure we're staying on track.
But it starts when it, when the PowerPoint comes up, doesn't it?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I've lived here since 2006. Next slide. My purpose in this presentation is to get different perspectives, and I'll bypass the information about the watershed. My point tonight is that this is not going to lead to orderly development. But I do want to just mention briefly, that poor creek has moved from being a grazed creek to a degraded creek, and it was called tonight a ruined stream bed. It is nothing like that. It's a very effective watershed. Now, let's talk about the orderly development issue. Next slide, please. First fact, as V. just pointed out, a mini-storage area, once constructed, is very difficult to transform. Therefore, the impact is going to be very major and long-term. Next slide, please. My perspective in the last few days has found out in a lot of research that many neighborhoods and communities are fighting mini-storage projects. All of these are currently fighting and struggling against mini-storage facilities in June 2021. Next slide. Economists looking at the impact of industrial land use around residential areas have been concerned about what happens. Not all studies find significant, significant negative impact, but quote, "The proximity to industrial land uses is almost universally found to have a deleterious effect." That's from the article in the Southwestern Economic Review. There are studies that are more uncertain, but it's really not clear what's going to happen. Next slide. What's absolutely clear is that in the trade publications of mini-storage developers and owners, the focus, how do we convince them to say yes, is brought up over and over and over. Typical of them is one developer's article who said, "Never accept no for an answer." I think it goes to the point of how much opposition and how hard it is to sell these. Next slide. The impacts on our neighborhood to be negative, major, and long-lasting. Now, we've heard about Class A and top-notch storage areas. I want to show you something about a Class A mini-storage facility in Portland and the condition of neighboring businesses just across the street from it. Next slide. This is a Class A storage. It looks beautiful. It was built in 2018. It's as shown in a Google Street View in June 2019. Next slide.
Mr. Klaus, here in about three minutes, can you wrap up in the next twenty seconds?
I certainly can. Directly across the street is this building, as it also looked in June 2019. Note the graffiti. Note the, note the fact that the, the building looks like it's still updated and abandoned. Next slide. Here's that same building and address in June of 2015. Next, next slide.
Mr. Klaus, where it, where it.
The business is operating and the landscaping is well-maintained. Next slide. It might work out well for the developer. It might have very serious impact on the orderly development of the city. Is that a good bet for our city? Thank you.
Luke, do we have anyone on the phone that is wishing to speak?
Yes, we have one new caller, Angel.
Okay.
Hello?
Yes, welcome, Angel.
Hello?
Yes, can you hear us?
I can hear you, but this is John, not Angel.
Oh, well.
Sorry, that's, was listed on the screening there, so I apologize for that.
No problem. Hi, John.
Well, I, I just, I, I just got a few things to say. I, I've lived in La Paloma Court since 1994. That clears up Mr. Barbeau's question on when La, when Paloma Creek was built. It was built in late eighty-three, and I moved in in February of ninety-four. You guys are well aware of the March Miracle in ninety-four, as well as in ninety-six when we got all that rain. And, and, and the slides for Barbeau's pictures with the concrete walls was due to the heavy flooding that we got those years because they knocked all our fences down. So we get quite a bit of rain comes through here when we get a lot of rain. Second, I wanted to say Scott never came to talk to me whatsoever. I'm just barely getting in on this because I was working and I just recently retired. So I oppose this. It, it's not, it's not, I, I can't say anything that anybody else hasn't said, but I also wanted to let Mr. Barbeau know that they closed off Paloma Park, the big trench to put sewer line in, because he was asking how that sewer line came in from Dove Creek. So that's how that happened. And I also wanted to agree with the caller that called in about the minimart, because the minimart used to be a beautiful drive-through minimart where you pulled in if you had kids in your car, and you got sodas, you got your milk, you got whatever you needed, you know, your beer. You went and played softball, or you came home. Now, I agree with him, it's an eyesore. They've added on to it that, you know, they built buildings on the side of it, so I oppose the building based on what everybody else said. I don't, I don't have specifics. I'm just getting in on it, but I would hate to see something like that go up like that. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do we have any other callers?
We do not, we do not have any callers at this time.
Okay, so I will say if you are on the webinar, you can feel free to raise your hand. If you're on the phone, you can press star nine. And I'm seeing no one at the moment, so I'm going to go to our city clerk. And I believe you had a couple of emails where individuals asked for a specific reading into the record this evening. Please note that all emails we got have gone into the record. We have all seen them. They are part of the public record. But there are a couple of individuals who specifically asked because they could not be here tonight to have theirs read.
I have one, two, three, three for sure who put it down as public comment, so I will for sure read those three. And then I'll just mention some of the other ones who I don't see their names on the, as participants. So I'll mention their names that they also did submit. So I'll start with the first one, which is from Josh Cross. "My name is Josh Cross, and I'm a resident of Dove Creek with twenty years' experience as an urban planning and economic development professional. One of the hats I currently wear is a professor of urban design at Cal Poly, CRP 202 and 213. Among the first assignments I provide my students is to evaluate the surrounding physical environment in order to determine the appropriate land use, scale, architecture, and landscape that would be appropriate to the site. In no way would a mini-storage be a use that an urban designer would propose because it's..." because it's, because it is not reflective or characteristic of the surrounding residential and park uses. This use is simply not compatible and is why I recommend adoption of Resolution B that allows you to deny the Dove Creek Mini Storage Project. One resident commented that by denying, by denying this project, the city would be sending a message to developers that Atascadero is not development-friendly. However, this resident should realize that other successful developers are engaging with the surrounding neighbors to discuss what an appropriate project would look like, thereby gaining supporters. To my knowledge, this developer has not conducted neighborhood outreach and is basically submitting a refined version of the project that was denied by the council in 2018. Denying this project will send a message that developers should engage with surrounding residents. Speaking of engaging with surrounding residents, let's talk about next steps and solutions. If the project is denied today and the applicant wishes to move forward, I would recommend pursuing one of two projects. First would be to evaluate a small-out residential or multifamily residential project. This would be compatible with surrounding land uses and would be an appropriate use to include next to Paloma Park. Unsightly fencing would not be necessary, and the pedestrian experience along El Camino Real and Viejo Camino would be improved. The second project would be to explore converting the existing design into a light commercial business park that would create jobs on the south end of town and add economic vibrancy. With help from the Community Development Department, either or both concepts would work nicely on the site and could fit within the project, within the area proposed for building pads. We need projects that create jobs. We need projects that activate and enhance the El Camino Real corridor, and we need a developer that listens to the community and council. We don't need this project. Once again, please deny the project as currently proposed with mini storage uses." The next one is Haley Penny. "I would like to say that I am opposed to the building of Dove Creek Mini Storage Facility. I have lived in Atascadero my whole life, and for 13 of those years, I was at the Bordeaux Apartments, right across the street from where the mini storage is planned. The last thing people need on the south side of Atascadero is mini storage, especially when our town already has seven other mini storages. A lot of people in the Bordeaux and the other surrounding apartments, mobile home units, and senior living areas can't really afford the extra monthly cost of a storage unit. I think the land could be used to serve the people in a different way. The United Methodist of the Street started a community garden. The city can have one too. Lower-income families can plant their own food. The wetlands won't be as affected by the development, and we can plant native species to support pollinators and local wildlife. Or if y'all don't like that plan, we can always use more low-income housing or locally-owned grocery store. It's hard to get to the other side of town for essentials, especially if RTA is your only choice. Don't build the mini storage. We don't need it. South Atascadero has a wonderful, was a wonderful place to grow up, and we can make it even better. A mini storage is basically a parking lot for stuff, and we shouldn't waste more land on it." And then the other one for public comment is from Tori Keen. "My name is Tori Keen, and I'm a planning commissioner and resident of Atascadero. I do not support the Dove Creek Mini Storage for various reasons. First, it does not conform with the surrounding neighborhood. Mini storage is not only industrial in nature. The buildings are large footprints or of hardscape. While efforts were made by the developer to make it more attractive, it doesn't change the fact that there are multiple large, long buildings with asphalt between the south face of the project is a large wall facing the gateway to our city. While there are landscape plans, it'll take years for the trees and other greenery to grow large enough to make it attractive. There is also a fence that encircles the property, closing it off to any other uses. Second, there is also the redirection of the creek the project proposes. This is in direct opposition to the Atascadero City General Plan. There have been quite a few references to a similar project in Napomo. The mini storage is located in the Trilogy Development. I drove to Napomo to see this property and have enclosed pictures of them. Woodlands mini storage is not in the middle of the development. It is on the southwestern outskirts of the Trilogy Neighborhood in a small industrial park. One does not have to see the mini storage when driving through the Trilogy Neighborhood. As you can see, the Woodlands mini storage is a typical-looking mini storage with rows of metal buildings. Unless one knows it's there, the houses, the houses on the hill above might never notice it. To me, that is a proper place and acknowledgement of a mini storage. It does not belong on the main corridor of Atascadero in the middle of a residential neighborhood. I do not believe in approving this conditional use permit. I do not believe approving this, this, and conditional use permit will help with Atascadero's economic development in any way. It does not bring jobs or tax revenue to the city. Two goals I believe are important to the city's future. While I understand this is a difficult piece of property to develop, I hope that, that rather than develop for developments case, the city council can focus on this strip of public use land and rezone it in the future during the general plan update in order to open up more and different options for developers moving forward." And she did include quite a few photos, and I have put those online. So for anyone who's interested, they can find those where the agenda is posted. And then I will just name off, we did have comments that came in from Zoe and Max Zappas. We had comments that came in from Christian Morano, Scott Head, Trevor Frye, and Ashley Frye.
Laura, if I could stop you for a moment, do you want to maybe just give a, a for and against something? Those comments are available.
Yeah, sure. And just to reiterate again, all, everything that we've received. Oh, I did, would also let you guys know that while we were in the meeting, we did get a call on our general line that I took from a resident. Her name was Diana Heller, and she wanted to let us know that she was opposed to the project and was registering her opposition. So I wanted to, to let you know that. Zoe and Max Zappas submitted comments in favor of the project. Christian Morano, I hope I'm not birchering that name, but that, those comments were in opposition to the project. Scott Head was in opposition to the project. Trevor Frye, opposition. Ashley Frye, opposition. Steve Silva, opposition. Barbara and Jack Bridwell, opposition. Chris Neary. Let's see. Opposition, sorry. Bing Anderson, opposition. Carolyn Lee, opposition. And Kathley Lemoine, I believe, and that was also an opposition. And those are all of the ones that we've received since the agenda packet was posted.
Thank you, Ms. Christiansen. All right, so I'm going to ask if there are any individuals. Mr. Fell, I do see your hand, but if we can hold off for a moment. If there are any individuals who have not yet spoken who would like to speak. We have public comment open for first-time speakers. You can raise your hand with a icon at the bottom of the webinar or press star nine on the phone. Luke, I'm not seeing a hand, but I just want to check with you to make sure there are no speakers, no speakers that need to speak on the phone.
Correct.
Okay. So here's what I will say. We do not typically open up a second time to speakers. If there is something burning that you feel like this has not been said, or this is something completely new that we have not already heard, then I want to give you the benefit of the doubt, and I will give 60 seconds for that. So, Mr. Fell, you do have your hand raised, and so if this is something we have not yet heard that you need to make sure we know about, I will give you 60 seconds to do that, so. We'll go ahead and bring you on.
There we go. Am I on now? Just, I, I kind of have a quick question. The people that were for it, do they live anywhere near this into town? That's all I have to ask.
Okay, well, we'll answer any questions once, once we're finished.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. I am not seeing any other hands raised, so I will give it a kind of going once, going twice. Okay. Mr. Klaus, I will give you one minute, and this needs to be new information.
I'll take far less than that, Mayor. Thank you. I just wanted to mention, since I forwarded it, that Lon Allen also emailed me and said it was fine with him if I forwarded it to the city. He is in opposition. Lon Allen, the City Atascadero News editor for 35 years, now retired. Thank you.
All right. I am seeing no other hands. Luke, any other callers?
There are not.
Okay, so now what I'm going to do, I did let the applicant know, Ms. Romero, that I would give you a closing three minutes, and so let's go ahead and do that now.
Well, thank you, Mayor Moreno. "I guess it's a good thing that this is not a popularity contest, and it's a hearing. Our project is 32% smaller than the initial project. Scott personally went door-to-door and knocked on every door at La Paloma. This was back when he did the first project. If no one answered the door or was not at home, he cannot control that. He is not, all I will say about what I know of Scott after working for him for the last year or so, he's not a liar. Scott's Morro Bay facility has a waiting list despite the fact that there are six other mini storages, because he runs a good facility. Anyone who believes that this site contains a functional wetland has not read the bio report. It will, however, provide a much better function post-restation. The examples of school and library that I provided were to compare how large those building masses are, absent much landscape at all. Also, people need to be realistic about government uses. They generate a lot of traffic. We've heard outcry over 77 trips a day. A school would generate hundreds of trips a day. The general plan does not require highest and best use on every parcel. That is absolutely an untrue statement. Dove Creek residents are strangely absent from tonight's hearing, and they are much closer to this project than in many of the other commenters. Nearly every project located on the central coast has significant opposition, so opposition alone should not be anything that is considered just for its sake or on its face. I don't understand how mini storage can be held accountable for graffiti on someone else's property. No disrespect to the speaker, but I think that that is a very, you're really reaching on that. And two weeks ago, Scott had a couple of individuals go door-to-door at the Bordeaux Apartments after we had had our last Planning Commission hearing, where, again, the Planning Commission was concerned about not meeting their needs or having talked with them. They spoke with about 100 residents, and none of them appeared tonight to oppose the project. Generally speaking, people who support projects do not rush out on a weeknight or a weekday to sit around for three or four or five hours to get their three minutes to say, hey, this is a great project. All I can say is that I'm going to have to put my trust in you as elected officials to weigh the facts, not the fiction, and to look at this project on its merits and not merely on outcry that in many cases is not substantiated by any facts, but rather emotion and fear. Thank you for your time tonight. We're here if you have additional questions. We look forward to your deliberation, and we ask that you uphold the approval, that your Planning Commission thoughtfully consider, and that you deny tonight's appeal. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Romero. And with that, we will close public comment and bring it back to council. And a few, a few questions I will ask this, and this might be for Ryan, but one of the, Ms. O'Brien was talking about just traffic hazards and blind spots and issues in that area. And I'm curious, what have we seen, and maybe this is even a, a police question, but what have we seen in terms of, you know, accidents or issues there? And, and, and what do we think, or what have we seen, what do we know will be done to mitigate anything like that?
That is a good question. I have not looked up the accident history of that area. Obviously, changing ingress, degress from a property significantly changes what could potentially happen with low-traffic volumes. There's pretty good site distance along the section of the road. There is a horizontal curve, but it's all pretty much speculation. That would be something that would be looked at to be able to determine if there's anything that needed to be done to increase site distance or, or provide additional safety measures.
So that would be, that would be done during the process to figure out what would need to be done to mitigate any potential?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. It was brought up that Building B, that from El Camino, you would be able to see the roll-up doors. And I'm assuming that would be going El Camino south. Let's see. Remind me, I think the roll-up doors on B are, let's see, B, yeah, B are on both sides? Kelly, is that what we were told?
It's on Viejo Camino, that you can see that.
Yeah, that's correct. I think that the applicant proposed to remove the roll-up doors from the northern elevation, so it would just be driving north on El Camino, where Building B juts out beyond the other buildings.
Okay, that's the spot, so just that piece. And then really coming south, you'd have to be like, looking at it to kind of see down and catch some row of roll-up doors if you were doing that. Coming northbound, you would just kind of see that section of maybe, I don't, hard to know feet-wise, maybe 20 feet across two stories that would have roll-up doors. Great, you're not going to have a roll-up door on a second story. I'm not exactly sure how that is going to work, but is that?
I believe it's about 60, 60 feet, and that it juts out beyond Building C.
Okay.
I'm sorry, if I, if you don't mind me interrupting for just saying, so what you're saying is on, on Building B, look, if you're driving north, the elevation that we've used in this presentation at some point showed a couple of doors. You could barely see it, but they were there, and it was used as an example of what you're going to see. So you're saying that those doors aren't there in the, in the latest revision of this? The roll-up on Building B, as you, like, it has to be on the south elevation?
They are there. During the applicant's presentation, they offered to remove the doors from the north elevation facing Building A and just have the, the upper floor be internally loaded corridors.
Right, that's for what would be coming off of Viejo Camino. What I'm talking about is coming north. You're saying that there's about 60 feet of space on Building B where you're going to see the roll-up doors as you're like traveling up El Camino. Yeah, correct. All right. Trying to see if there were any other, Mr. Fell, you asked about if those in favor live in the neighborhood. We've had, you know, a handful of people who, over time, have been in favor. I know one of them tonight does live in Las Lomas, one who had written in, lives in the Las Lomas area. So there are some in the area that are in favor of it. Some others are other places in Atascadero, but we don't really track that. Let me see. And then just the comment of Building E against Viejo Camino. The comment was that, and I, I realize that nobody controls potential graffiti, so this isn't about the graffiti per se, but if you could show us, Kelly, what does it look like along that backside of Building E, along Viejo Camino? Is that simply a wall and then kind of, is it, we're kind of talking about, is it, is it softened, or is there greenery?
Sure, so this is the Viejo Camino elevation. I think this one still kind of shows fencing, but there's a, a block wall as part of the building in this area here, and then there's fencing that connects to the building off to the sides. In the applicant's revised package, they've included some like wire wall trellises that you could plant vines up. That's not currently included in the package in your resolution, so that would need to be added as a condition if you wanted to add that. But that's what they are proposing, and I believe the block does have some texture to it as well. I can check that on the plans in a minute, which I know can sort of be a graffiti deterrent to a certain degree. Just depends on if people want to write words or just graffiti a wall.
Okay. All right, thank you. Do any of my colleagues, were there any things that were brought up or questions that came up out of that that I haven't brought up? Councilmember Darris?
Yeah, clarification from planning staff, if we could. Obviously, a lot of discussion on traffic. We heard that there's 77 trips per day. I know when I first heard that term, trips per day on any project, it meant nothing to me, and it sounded like it was a lot. So if I could get some perspective, if this area that we're showing here with, that is planning, that is proposed to be developed with these buildings produces 77 trips. If this amount of area was developed with- produces seventy-seven trips, if this amount of area was developed with apartments, my understanding is you could fit about a hundred and sixteen apartments. How many trips per day does that translate to for apartments for this size?
Typical residents can have about seven trips per day. Keep in mind, a trip is one trip. So when I, when I go to the store, that's not one trip, it's actually two trips. I leave my house and I come back. It's actually two trips. So we're talking about seventy-something trips. That's someone coming to and leaving this particular site is actually counted as two trips. With the typical single-family residence being about seven or eight trips, apartment's the same thing. Any residence can do the same thing. So you talk about apartment, whether it's a studio, one bedroom, two bedroom, three bedroom can be a little different, but in general, you know, that can be about seven hundred trips.
So yeah, so yeah, I just did a quick count. Seventy times a hundred and sixteen units is a hundred and twelve trips. So, and that might be even on the low side. So, so that I think puts in perspective the difference between this, what, what is low at seventy-seven versus apartments or even commercial, other commercial uses are gonna be higher than seventy-seven if I'm not mistaken. And I know I, my son played baseball there for a number of years at, at the Little League, and it got crowded with cars and proposing something that's gonna add a significant amount of traffic would, would, could be problematic. So anyway, that's all I have. Thank you.
Mayor, I, I had some additional questions, but in relationship to, I, I think you might have just been asking about the
Mayor Potomnuson was next and then
Sorry, sorry, I didn't see that.
It's hard to see all of us on the screen, so no one knows what we're doing. Actually, turned off my mic.
I do.
So the questions that I have is that we were presented new renditions not included in our packets, but were done in the presentation. One of those being the changing of building B with the roll-up doors that you mentioned, Mayor. But then also the reduction in the parking lot to include additional screening. How does that affect the project, Kelly?
So sure, so the parking lot was not reduced in any of the plans, either the revised ones that the applicant submitted as part of the record or the ones in your packet, but that is included as a condition of approval. And so that could just be left in there as a condition of approval if you would move forward to uphold the planning commission's decision or the condition could be modified to specify exactly where you want additional landscaping to occur. And just in looking through the applicant's plans tonight as we're measuring and providing information, I think the, the biggest change is just building E having those wall trellises on them. And so that could be added as a condition of approval as well.
And then the other question I have is the area outside of project scope. Their presentation shows that it had vegetation or landscaping in it, but that does not actually happen. That just happens to be an old slide from the previous project. Is that correct?
Yes, that's what they presented. Of course, the council has an opportunity to add any conditions that they see fit to make the findings for approval, should you go that route.
If this project were to be approved, this other area outside of project scope, how does that, does that stay vacant? Does that get developed? What happens with that portion?
So under the current resolution, which was the resolution that included conditions that were, was approved by planning commission, there is a requirement to put an open space easement over that portion of the project, which would basically mean it would have to remain unbuilt.
Would they be required to landscape it like the pictures they presented?
Not currently, but that could be added as a condition.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Morbo.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And I, I guess I mean, cause I, I can go ahead and ask my own questions, but in relationship to the public comment, I think it was Mia O'Brien, you know, asking me about the, she, she noted that the mention was made of turning lanes, et cetera, and I don't know if we had a graphic to display that. If not, I always ask Ryan Hayes that, you know, these, these features, and I think you kind of alluded to this, these features that would be added, turn lanes, et cetera, would be all to make it safe. I mean, this is an extremely low traffic, additional traffic count. You know, but, but nonetheless, these additional features would be there to make it safer. I would guess Ryan Hayes would speculate, would it even make it safer than it is now? Because of the, the additional features?
Um, that'd be, yeah, speculation, but there's currently really no turning movements. It, it may improve it actually by, I, I'm not sure what the final improvements would wind up looking like, but right now we haven't, you know, no two-way left turn lane into Paloma. So you do have people turning left, they're stacking up in the southbound lane. So anytime you add those pockets to the, to the middle of the road, it adds protection and improved traffic flow, so.
All right, thank you. Mayor, should I go ahead and ask my additional questions?
Please do.
The, some mention was made of reuse of the facility, which I assume was not anticipated. And, but a letter writer had talked about, you know, how do you know what people are doing in, in these things? And they, you know, are they setting up shop and, you know, doing woodworking or this or that or other things that might pertain to their business? I had asked this question of Ms. Romero when I met her, and she could maybe clarify this, or perhaps Kelly could. My understanding is that there's not sufficient electricity in any of these units to do that. I mean, you have a light. If that's, am I correct in that, that, you know, if I was a carpenter or something and I rented one of these units, I wouldn't be able to surreptitiously do carpentry in my storage unit, right?
Let's go ahead and have staff answer, and if there's something staff can't answer, we'll bring on Ms. Romero.
Sure.
Sure, yeah, it's definitely not the intent of storage units to have any businesses run out of them. I can't answer, you know, what might be included in a storage unit. We've heard from the applicants that it would be a light. You could certainly condition that there be no other electrical or outlets allowed in any storage unit, and that would help curb any potential use of those units for anything other than storage.
And thank you. And these kinds of operations nowadays are all, I, I would assume remotely monitored in, both in terms of access in and out and, you know, cameras around them. You know, this isn't, I assume, and I don't know if that's part of the condition, you know, that they include security cameras and access codes. You know, some people had alleged in, in letters that, you know, this might attract homeless people, people coming in all hours, that sort of thing. Is, is it conditioned as far as security monitoring or in and out monitoring?
It's not conditioned for that currently. We have heard from the applicant that that's their plan, but if you wanted to ensure that, you could add that as a condition of approval.
Okay, thank you. And then for Public Works, my question is, the applicant has spoken of a pathway that would run along the where the sewer pipeline easement is, which right now is just in the field. There's, you know, there's no DG pass to drive on. There's no DG pass to, or some, any other pass material to walk on. I'm wondering though, if Public Works has commented at the planning commission, they did relative, you know, to making sure nobody could ever drive on it other than Public Works. My question and concern is, on the one hand, is this, would this not be a possible public benefit for people to be able to walk along a path and see the restored wetland? On the other hand, and this is kind of a separate question, is there gonna be any sort of fencing along El Camino in the triangle, in the remaining triangle piece to discourage people from cutting across this property, especially if there was a path, cutting across it, you know, to cut over from Dove Creek neighborhood to the park? And how does Public Works feel about that?
We did, that's been discussed a bit. It was not, in my knowledge, an intention to put a path through here. It doesn't necessarily impact, you know, the usage of the, of the easement for, for sewer repair and maintenance. But I believe there's already another path that better aligns with existing path, path from Dove Creek that is more likely to be used. As for fencing, I can't really speak too much to that.
When you make comments to the other regarding other paths, you mean through the church property? That's a couple
That's correct.
Okay, okay. Cause I mean, on the one hand, I could see there, there might be some public benefit to people being able to walk along, as I said, the restored and enhanced wetland. You know, they might like that, but you wouldn't want it to be a thoroughfare or become a through pathway, I would guess. So, okay, let me see. I think that's it. I'm glad you clarified the question. I mean, the thing about the trellis on the wall. You know, I mean, there's hundreds and if not thousands of feet of wall along Dove Creek, the neighborhood, and it doesn't attract graffiti. And I, you know, I know a thing or two about graffiti, having dealt with it for three years as a police volunteer. And the worst thing for graffiti is a, is the open face cinder block wall. There, the wall starts out attractive. They're the worst surface. But the bottom line is, that doesn't, that rarely occurs on occupied property. And it rarely, almost never occurs on landscaped property, you know, where wall covers, is covered by landscape. So. All right, thank you. I think that's, oh, no, I did have a question from Mr. Dunsmore. Do we, as, as we look at these seven findings that we would need to make if we were to approve this? And we, we all seem to have focused a little bit on number four. Understandably so, because that was the biggest concern last time. Do we have a definition of what compatible with the neighborhood means? And do we have a definition of orderly development? Or are those just two very clearly, you know, subjective terms?
They really are subjective. There is no clear definition for those. It's kind of obvious, I think, you know, what I think those kind of relate to and mean, but it is subjective. It's open.
Well, I mean, this neighborhood has, you know, it has a convenience store that's kind of a little rundown. So I, you know, looked at it more closely today with the peeling paint. It's got two lots of commercial neighborhood zoning. It's got the huge commercially zone, not huge, the larger commercially zone property at the corner of Dove Creek that we're, you know, going to be looking at a proposed project there. It's got two more commercially zone parcels south of Santa Barbara that I think are the only city properties south of Santa Barbara Road. It's got churches and a park and apartments and, you know, homes on small lots in Dove Creek. It, it's rather eclectic in nature. I don't know how you would actually describe this neighborhood if you were. Would you have a description for it of this neighborhood?
It is. I mean, it's somewhat rural nature, but then it, it transitions to being very high density as you pass the state hospital and as you approach the state hospital. But then there's also parkland and single family. It is, it's very mixed. It's really mixed. And when we talk about these findings, it's not only the form and mass and aesthetics and architectural, it's also about the land use and about what kinds of uses are happening. So that's also a consideration for the findings. But I think you're right. It's subjective and it's, it's difficult to make these interpretations in some of these neighborhoods, certainly.
And over the years, I mean, Dove Creek was at one point zoned almost all commercial, the entire neighborhood was on commercial. Los Lomas, I assume, was residential suburban before it, you know, was allowed to have a hundred plus apartments and houses.
Yes.
I, I don't know what La Paloma Court was. But there's been changes in the area over time, right?
Yes, absolutely, certainly. And there's still a big commercial property left, five acres at, at Dove Creek. And historically, it was a regional commercial planned shopping center. It was gonna have some substantial development in it at Dove Creek.
Right. All right, thank you.
Councilmember
Yes, thank you. First of all, let's come back to the, I'm not so, I think we've, we've dealt with the, the question of the volume of traffic. But there was concern expressed about the bridge, that there's that very narrow bridge. And the, the competition with additional traffic with, with kids going back and forth to the park, kids going back and forth in the school bus. In, you know, with that, the, having it part of my sight as I walk that and walk the circuit through the Methodist church and, you know, back around and around the property a couple of times. And that, there's, there's, it's a, you know, it's a scary street to be walking on there on Viejo Camino with not much protection for pedestrians. Is, I'm assuming that the bridge takes tracks trucks and therefore is strong enough to take whatever trucks are gonna drive, drive. Is that right?
That, that would be correct.
Okay. Is there anything the long range plans to widen that bridge so that it's, I mean, it's a short little bridge, but, you know, if you've got kids on bicycles or, or pedestrians who are crossing it, you know, they're dodging the vehicles.
Currently, we have nothing in our long range capital plans to widen that bridge.
Okay. Is that something that we're likely to consider when we, when we look at circulation planning for the, in the general plan?
Um, it, it could certainly be a consideration as things in that area develop. Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we've got similar concerns on, on Halcyon there on the other side of the park, which has gravel trucks and, and no, no bike lane. No, okay. On, Councilmember Verbo described this as a restored wetland. I want to get clarification on that because in the earlier version of the project, the, the one that did not, that failed on appeal in two thousand, twenty nineteen, that, that was presented to us as having an investment in a restored wetlands area with, and to describe water flows into the area and maintaining certain kinds of plants in the area and doing all of that. In the current project, what I'm hearing for that whole corner is that it is out of the scope of the project. And so I'm not hearing that there's any effort to restore wetlands. I am hearing that there's a, a effort to manage the creek in a way that's beneficial to the project and to create something that would have, you know, that might, you know, may or may not be visually nicer. And that to do something with the creek is potentially a benefit, but I'm not hearing anything about a restored wetland. Did I miss something?
So currently, their project description and the associated landscape plan does not include any wetland restoration. I believe that they are waiting until they hear back from the agencies after they've submitted permits as to whether or not they are required to do any wetland restoration on the site. If they are, then they will need to find area for that and it will follow the guidelines of those agencies. But there is currently not a planned wetland restoration as part of the project.
Okay, cause, cause there was, there was benefit, you know, of that overt thing that, that helped ameliorate some of the changes. You know, at least for me, it was, that was important to buying off on, on what was the even larger creek diversion. The, the last thing is, we haven't talked about what the project looks like at night. So I, I just wanted to understand, I understand that there's some shielding of the lights that was a condition of, that the planning commission discussed and that they, that might be motion sensitive. So we have in Bordeaux Apartments, in some of La Paloma Court even, and some of Dove Creek, residentials that look down onto this property. And if there's a higher project built, even if it's not as high as, as Dove Creek Commercial has requested, those projects, you could also look down on this project. So for those who look down on it at night, are they gonna see lights flashing on and off as people come and go? What is that, what is that like?
Well, the hours of the, of the project itself is limited by the project conditions to nine P M. And a lighting does have a condition to be on a motion sensor at night. So the assumption is that if nobody's there moving around and the facility is closed after nine P M, that there's no lighting. But then again, is there security lighting needed in addition to the motion lights? And I think it's a discussion that we can have a little further, or we can condition that a little clear, more clearly that there's no lights, you know, after a certain hour. you know, after a certain hour. Um, but there's also, you know, a security need for motion lights if there's someone that's trying to break in. So. Right now, it's simply that the lights are on motion sensors.
Yeah, so, and hopefully there's something to be set up so that, you know, every cat wandering through doesn't, uh, doesn't create a light show for the neighbor. It drives everybody nuts. Um, but, you know, but they, you know, there are inherent security needs of these projects. That, you know, we assume that they'll, they'll address. Uh, okay. So, so basically after nine P M, there would only be motion sensitive lights. Um, and they, and they would be shielded so that we're not getting, um, as much splash up above. Is that correct?
Right. All lights, um, are required to be shielded. Um, and so they will, they will have to comply with that. Um, we haven't really seen a lighting plan, so we don't know if these are going to be pole lights or if they're just going to be mounted on the building. Um, if they're mounted on the building, they're likely to be, um, just a, a lower height level. Um, and, you know, lighting sort of the ground and probably less obtrusive, um, in general. Uh, but we haven't seen their lighting plan yet. I did also want to mention that, um, some of their restoration area, um, if they have to do wetland restoration would be within that creek channel. It doesn't necessarily mean that the restoration area would be in that open space area.
Okay. Thank you.
Uh, I will ask because I did see Ms. Romero pop on. Was there a question you heard that maybe staff didn't answer uh, correctly or sufficiently in your view?
Uh, thank you so much, um, Mayor Protam. Uh, Kelly just addressed the issue that there is already planned restoration in the creek and then, uh, any additional restoration would be subject to the regulatory agency permitting process. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Uh, any other questions or are we ready for deliberation?
Just, just a quick follow on to Councilmember Funk's question about traffic on the bridge. When I was out, been out there several times in the last few weeks, I did notice, you know, of course, the gravel trucks coming down Halcon. I saw them on Viejo Camino headed to Santa Barbara. I didn't actually see any crossing the bridge. But do the gravel trucks currently, if they're, you know, heading north into town for some reason, do they, you know, turn from Halcon on to Viejo Camino? And already, you know, do we have gravel trucks crossing that bridge on a regular basis? Do we know?
I believe that our agreements with them require them to go to the Santa Barbara intersection. I believe they're somewhat prohibited from turning down Viejo Camino.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. So.
Uh, any other questions or we're ready for deliberation?
Ready for deliberation? Um, I do like to piggyback to Charles Burrow's, um, comment about that traffic. Uh, my daughter was in that school for close to a year and so I drove it five days a week. And it is a challenging navigation with a bigger truck, smaller cars and our kids on the streetways. So, uh, any increase in traffic is going to be a challenge in that area, um, just in general, because there's so many moving parts. I mean, you've got the commercial aspect of the trucks, you've got the, the kids, the community. I mean, that's a tight, very congested area, especially on that bridge. And many times you'll see people stop and let someone else that has a bigger vehicle, a bus or a larger commercial truck, horse trailers are there on a regular basis, um, pass one at a time over that bridge versus having two small cars cross at the same time.
Um, a- along those lines, it brings forward a question. I mean, I, 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 to me, I mean, seventy-seven trips a day, you could hardly you, you could hardly come up with any possible use with less cars than that, less vehicle trips than that. Um, and, and so short of saying, no, we're never going to let anybody build anything here because it'll bring a car. You really can't get less, less traffic volume, but given, I mean, this, just a thinking, thinking out loud question. You know, if, if we, you know, what if you only allowed right turns in from Viejo Camino on this, so that people would, you know, would not be coming from over the bridge. They might leave over the bridge, but you know, they wouldn't be coming from over the bridge to turn into this project. I don't know what Ryan Hayes, a public works traffic guy, would think about an idea like that.
Um, you could potentially only, I, I think we found that, um, only allowing right turns in can be problematic. Uh, people will often disregard that, even if you design it for that.
Yeah.
Um, it's something that could be looked at. I, I do doubt that there would be significant traffic um, coming from the south trying to enter into this property, but it's, um, you know, most would probably use El Camino coming from either direction, um, just because it's quicker.
Okay, yeah, that's what I would assume. Uh, thank you.
Yeah, if I may touch on the traffic thing also, I'm, I'm just, I'm really the, the whole idea of trips per day thing, I'm kind of stuck on that right now. And trying to put this in perspective for myself, as well as anybody listening, I live in a development, there's, uh, I think a hundred and twenty-four homes. And if you use a seven to eight trips per day for these, for, uh, for these houses, we have one way in and one way out. There's one gate in and there's about, it calculates to about a thousand trips per day. And I've rarely ever have been stopped because two or three cars are in front of me. Uh, it's a gate, so you gotta wait for the gate. So maybe occasionally there is. So even at a thousand trips per day, which sounds like an awful lot, has never really, uh, generated a traffic jam as a, as a result. So, uh, that's the reason why I needed it in perspective, because I didn't know how many trips per day where I live and to, and, and what does that really translate to? Because if somebody told me a thousand trips per day here, I'm just picturing cars stacked up for the entire length of Viejo Cami, uh, Camino.
If I could, if I could pause the discussion on traffic, it sounds like we can all come to agreement that finding size, we can make finding size and we don't need to discuss traffic anymore. All right.
Yeah.
And then, well, then, then I, okay, then I'm going to switch over to, I'm not even sure what finding it'll be, but it has to do with the view and seeing roll up doors and what you're going to see, the fence versus wall versus whatever. Uh, one of the, I think the first rendition of this that was proposed by the applicant had a block wall. But of course, part of the, one of the buildings or certain, I think there were three buildings along the outer edge, uh, towards El Camino. The building was the wall, so, which I actually thought it really shielded everything with on, on the inside. So if you're worried about what you're seeing as a, as a storage facility, it, it was already blocked by virtue of itself, it was blocking it. Um, and then it got taken, it changed to an open fence. Now you can see everything inside there. The, uh, there appears to be a couple of roll up doors that might still be visible if you're driving north on El Camino. My personal preference is, is to, is to go back with the block wall. I think the block wall is much more decorative. There's a block wall on the other side of, uh, El Camino Real. Um, yeah, it, this one I think was even more decorative. If, you know, you can, you can do much with a C M U type wall. Uh, and it would, it would shield, you don't have to worry about vegetation. We talked about that earlier. You know, how, how long is it going to last? Is it going to die? How do you regulate making sure that it's, it's, um, they're being taken care of? So if, I mean, if, if any other conditions were going to be added to this, I would, I would prefer to go back to a block wall, at least on certain portions of the project, that may be something that the parts that face El Camino and, uh, and, and also on Viejo Camino as well. So I'll leave it at that for now. Thank you.
Councilmember Funk, followed by Councilmember Borbo.
Yeah, I will, I'll reserve some of my other comments, but I do, did want to respond immediately on the, on the wall question. Um, that, um, I, I think the project has improved significantly by the removal of that wall. Uh, because it breathes now. Um, that, that the fencing, uh, people, when we look at it before, you know, we were looking at, um, you know, a nine foot retaining wall on top of a ten foot wall, so nineteen feet of solid wall running almost the entire width between Viejo Camino and El Camino Real. Um, and quite a few commenters pointed out that it would tend to look like a prison. Um, which was sort of an inescapable, um, thing of that wall and that much hardscape, um, together. Um, it's very, it's difficult to escape that implication and that is, that's problematic for a community. Uh, the fencing does help that, um, because you, at least it, it certainly makes the, uh, the view from the El Camino side as you are passing it on El Camino. Um, and looking down the end caps of the buildings, that's the preview that, that they, we get in nice full rendition. Um, you know, the, that does, um, you know, humanize that, that, uh, side of it. Uh, that particular face.
So if we could pull our discussion to the finding here, thank you very much. I was seconds away from asking you to pull that up. Um, so, uh, and really the highlighted ones are the ones that we've had the most discussion about, uh, the most public comment about. So if we could kind of start circling in on these and move our discussion in that direction would be most helpful. Councilmember Borbo.
Yeah, I mean, in keeping that in mind there, I mean, I look at, I mean, number one, um, you know, this is specifically listed as a conditionally allowed use in this zone. And so for me, you know, looking at one and two together is, yeah, it's conditionally allowed. I mean, we don't have to allow it. But, um, it isn't as if, you know, this is, you know, a use that we just totally not envisioned. To be honest, I'm not sure why this land is zone public. I'm not sure why public zone includes storage, you know, as a conditionally allowed use. Um, but it does. And, you know, that, so the property owner bought the property with that in mind. Um, and I think it would be inconsistent with the general plan for us to rule, you know, to say that it doesn't meet the finding of being consistent with the general plan. Um, you know, we've had a lot of comments regarding the creek, uh, as it were. Um, you know, in, in terms of that and what our plan says about that. But I just, I mean, I look at this, I, you know, I've walked it, I've looked at it a bunch of times, looked at it at different times of the year. And I don't see how, given the requirements of the regulatory agencies, I don't see how, you know, if it makes it through those wickets with those regulatory agencies, how this would not be a more appealing, uh, you know, water course than it is now. I mean, I, I just, I, I see that as a, one of the benefits of the project is what it's going to do to the flow, uh, not the flow, but you know, the additional vegetation, et cetera, that you're going to create, I think, habitat for frogs and other things. It just isn't there now. Um, and I think that's one of the benefits of the project is, is the creek stuff. And so I don't, and I, and I'm trying to think in terms of what neighbors have brought up. How is, you know, how is it, um, have a negative impact? It's an extremely low traffic use, you know, uh, it's, it can be well, it can be made to look, uh, fine with the landscaping as long as we're strong on those conditions and can enforce those conditions. So I see that it's, um, compatible. I, I think the, the big thing is that number four, is it consistent, inconsistent with the character of the immediate ne- neighborhood or contrary to its orderly development? And I'm, I'm just having a hard time seeing how it's not. Um, in other words, the neighborhood is a variety of things. Uh, mini storage is not a, um, you know, oh boy, I'm excited, we're getting a mini storage. But it's, as one person referred to it, it's a benign use, you know, very low traffic. It doesn't generate a lot of money for the city, but it doesn't generate demand for services either. And I, I think that in that sense, you know, this would be an improvement over what is there now. Um, and so I, I don't have a problem making a finding for number four. I, I, my only concern about that, and the question would be for Mr. Dunsmore, is, okay, so you approved this project. What does that mean? There, there's two vacant lots in this area. You know, the publicly zone area that, that are between the two of the churches. And so say somebody came in and said, hey, I want to do that too. How precedent setting is it? Because then you get down to orderly development of, it's not orderly to have it all be mini storage, but it's not, also not orderly development to all have it, to have it all be multifamily housing either. Or, or any other potential use that might come with a rezone or something. So, um, I, I'm just having a hard time seeing the, uh, the negative aspect. Um, you know, the folks are talking about, um, you know, it, it just, I'm not, I'm not seeing those things. If I lived there, if I lived on La Paloma Court, uh, if I lived in the Dove Creek neighborhood, um, my only concern about this is, is the pretty picture, is that what it's going to really look like in a few years? And I, what I would want is that the city makes sure that we properly condition it so that it, you know, will look as described. And I don't mean it, you know, I'm not going to see a single roll up door, but just that, uh, overall, I'm going to see this thing and I'm going to wonder what's going, what goes on behind there. There's a lot of trees and there's some buildings with some varying roof lines, et cetera. I'm, you know, I'm, it's not going to jump out at me, which brings up a question about signage. I'd like to limit the size of signage on this thing. Um, and, uh, but those are my thoughts, um, focused on number four and I, I can make the finding for number four in my own mind, um, of things considered.
Thank you.
Oh, and let me add though, I did want to add the, in terms of benefit, you know, as we said, this isn't like, oh boy, we get a mini storage in it, you know, or, or thing. Um, because I don't think that's exciting to anybody. And I think that we, um, certainly I, when I first heard mini storage proposed for this a couple of years ago, my first thought was yuck. Mini storage, you gotta be kidding me, because what immediately springs to mind is the long buildings, cinder block walls, roll up doors behind an ugly rusting fence. And that's the one thing that this project can't change, and that's the word, mini storage. But I do want to also focus on the other potential public benefit of the sidewalk, the road improvements. And as I suggested, potential to have a sidewalk that would go all the way, you know, down to the, to the, uh, mini mart in lieu of the El Camino sidewalks, that would be of immediate public benefit and save the city its C D B G money for another project that would be of public benefit.
Thank you, Councilmember Borbo. Don't y'all jump in? Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, so, um, I am, uh, I listened as I was going through this, I'd sort of made a quadrant of notes of, of, um, arguments pro and con and, and also things that I felt were uh, well supported by the facts and things that I did not feel were well supported by the facts. Um, and, and it leads me to, um, to feel comfortable with everything but potentially one and four, that those, I think, are the, the conditions that, the, uh, findings that we should, should focus on. Um, the, um, um, you know, obviously we are still, you know, changing the creek. Um, I'm inclined to, um, particularly if they're going to do some wetlands restoration within, it's a fairly broad swale according to the, the numbers that we saw earlier. Um, you know, with the, they've allowed for more space with it than they did before. So that it can, it's not just a creek smashed up against a wall, but you know, it's something more natural. Um, and so it has a potential of being something that, that looks like it belongs there. Uh, doesn't look manufactured. Um, and I, and I think that that, so I, I think I can, can deal with, um, with, uh, number seven on that. Um, you know, that the trade, that, you know, we're ma- you know, managing the creek, but we're also creating some benefit. Um, less benefit, but less management. I can work with that. Uh, so I'm still, still chewing on, um, on findings one and four. Um, the, the considerations I heard that I didn't hear in, from, um, Councilmember Verbeau in his support of that, um, were, um, included, we're just, the scale, the, uh, the funded, a lot of the residents talked about the fundamental character of this, that we've got, you know, it's long, straight buildings, also wide buildings, because that, the, uh, um, that's a big intersection there at La Paloma Court. And one of the things I was looking at is like, so, okay, so how big is this building? That, you know, that's going to be, you know, very present. That, you know, that's going to be, you know, very present and feel. Um, you know, very significant from, you know, you know, that neighborhood where we heard a lot of of concern. Is it, it's a, you know, big building on that side and and, you know, a steady one, not uh, he is not that tall. So that's not a problem, but it but it is large, and it does extend a long ways across. So it 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 occupies a lot of physical mass. Um, you know, less than the prior version, which helps. Um, but it's still, it is still very present and, you know, so it's solid, it's buildings with. Uh, with hardscape. Um, so it will, so the concern I heard from residents is it feeling um, industrial? And contributing um, to um, less. It doesn't add synergy to any of the uses that we might have in that. In in the neighborhood overall. So, you know, as I'm thinking about um. The orderly development of this very interesting and sort of complicated neighborhood, as you've pointed out. The uh, we have the potential for um. For a multi, a a neighborhood that has single family and multifamily, very residential with parks and churches. Uh, that has a real, you know, feel as a neighborhood uh, with neighborhood supporting commercial. Um, you know, and some external commercial. I know in the Dove Creek parcel on the corner, the master plan also does allow for a hotel. Um, as well as as commercial, it looks like their current plan there would allow for. Um, use the hotel as a way to help get the neighborhood supporting restaurant and and commercial. Um, and you know, that and some additional housing. So you you've got it, got the potential to have. Um, to move towards more cohesion in this neighborhood, there's something that feels right and that presents well as a gateway. That's the general plan aspect that uh, might still be of of concern. You know, as as you come into the community and said it, we we certainly don't. Don't want to convey prison. The uh, the changes in the plan do help that somewhat. But it is still, it's going to be. Going to take up a, you know, a lot of space and be very physically present. So I'm curious as to how people think that affects whether that will be synergistic in helping us attract the neighborhood serving commercial. That this neighborhood needs. The mini storage could be located anywhere in the sense that people don't. It it the the proximity of that to people is on my list of things that aren't really supported well with the facts. I mean, the if some folks in the neighborhood use it and they would be close, but I but people just. The reason the traffic counts are low is that people don't visit their stuff that often. So in the, that's, I don't, I don't really. Um, give a lot of strength to the fact that that folks in the neighborhood would use it. Um, there are other things that that neighborhood needs, like a market and and other kinds of of services and things to. Um, enjoy and and, you know, food service and that kind of thing that we could, that. Um, I'm curious as to whether people think this would would um. Help us attract those businesses, um, make it harder to attract those businesses. Or make no difference. Um, that the the continue, the reinforcing the sort of randomness of a lot of things together. If um, whether people think that that actually helps the neighborhood. It is also, it was just such an unusual sight for this, because it is, it does have three hundred and sixty degree visibility. Um, and that's not typical of mini storage. Anywhere. You know, that so it, you know, this does, it is just a much more visible uh, property. So I I want to um, put those comments out and and hear what folks have to say. And, you know, because nothing, because no amount of of, the landscaping helps soften the look. But it can't change the character of it. And so that's why I want to, so I want to hear what colleagues have to say on that.
Okay, I want to make sure you meant us when you said folks.
You're right, no, right. It's it's the folks that are discussing are the five of us right now. You know, not not the applicant or the general public, no, it's it's a um. For the public, our deliberation, and I want to hear from my colleagues. That's uh, you know, why we're, we are. You know, we have promised to be in, to be willing to be influenced by one another. Um, and I want to um.
Yes, thank you.
This is is a is a thought as opposed to it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tim Newsom.
So it's always challenging to get to this point and wish that Phil could provide us with definitions. Because as you sit back and you look at the definitions. And you look and you try to understand what orderly development is, you look up the definition of orderly. And it comes out neatly and methodically arranged. Nothing in that area really seems like it is neatly positioned together like um, councilmember Borbo said. And then you get this three hundred and sixty degree picture of what all this empty space suddenly can become. And it is a very large project, so trying to get it right, trying to make sure as we set precedent. Do we want multiple mini storages to show up in this one structure, section of publicly zoned area? Um, and just our community. Came out to public comment and in our, in my notes, I think it was fourteen were opposed to one yes, just on public comment. Um, I didn't take a tally on um, what was submitted for letters. Because we have read books and books of information and correspondence on this. So everyone tends to have a different opinion of what they want their neighborhood to be. Here, the five of us get to decide what orderly development is. I don't think that this mini storage, granted, it is the most nicely designed. Storage I've ever seen. Meets that immediate neighborhood compatibility or orderly development. Only because it's not like we have um. This perfect map that says, okay, we were, it's got all going to look like this. I mean, like everybody says, the originally, the the market was functional, it had purpose. It was utilized in the capacity in which it was proved for, and now it's in disarray. It's um, not being maintained. So I think our community, as they start to come up, are concerned about what could happen to that project years from now. And this is such a large project, so I'm still hung up on orderly development and neighborhood compatibility. And that's with a fresh perspective with all of the new information that's been submitted at this point.
So findings one through three and five through seven, you can you can make, it's number four.
Yes, I probably um, agree with the general plan. It's zoned for this. We're just looking at a conditional use permit at this point.
Okay. Uh, councilmember Daris.
You're muted.
You're muted, councilmember Daris.
I was looking for the button. I thought I kept pressing it and it wasn't working. Had to do it a different way. Um, well, Charles, Charles talks a lot. Pretty much said everything that I wanted to say. You know, I really have to say, I'm just going to keep it simple and say, I do agree with a lot with what Charles said and uh, you know, and and some of some of the things about the uh. I'm sorry, Charles, I couldn't resist. The orderly development thing, you know, yeah, I was looking at this, there's there's seven or eight different. Zones in this area. Denying this project, I don't know how that's going to. Incorporate or going to promote orderly. Development, what's what what's going to be here that's going to, it's going to be different. I think the high quality architecture of this project is is a blessing. I mean, there could, there's a lot of other things that could be built here. That would, um, first of all, the function of the facility would be much less desirable. The architecture of this, I think, is 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 very, very nice, very desirable. And and as as Charles said. You know, you're gonna, I think you're gonna drive past this thing. Well, let me back up a little bit. I mean, the first thing I said as a planning commissioner, as on the DRC when this came to us, when I saw the packet. We're seeing a mini storage, and I I felt exactly the same way that Charles said, he goes, oh, my God, a mini storage, what? What's this going to be like? And then I opened up the packet. And I thought I was looking at the wrong project, because this isn't a mini store, this looks like a a professional business park or or what, uh, you know, a commercial building. And then I started looking more into it, and I realized that it was, and it was just what this, I've never seen anything quite like, quite like this for a mini storage, so it was, it it it's it's um. It's in a league of its own as far as that goes. So I don't, I really can't find where it's inconsistent with the character, because as we've discussed. You know, what is immediate neighborhood, what is the character of this of this area? Uh, with the housing and all the different zones in the public and. And I I can't, I can't bring myself to say that it's not consistent with, you know, or. I mean, it's not consistent, it's not inconsistent. I I don't see that it's inconsistent and that it creates a a major issue. With uh, being outside the realm of what should be here on that. So I'm I'm just going to leave it. The other, you know, again, I've seen this a couple of times as a planning commissioner and on DRC. And I, you know, I I approved it the first time, there's some some changes to it. And I still think that it's it's uh, it's not something that should be denied. I think it's it's a fine project. And it will, uh, as long as the conditions are met, the the conditions that we apply to it. And that the upkeep is uh, is consistent throughout time, then I think it's going to be. I I'm, I think it's going to be a fine project, so I'll just leave it at that. Thank you.
Councilmember Borbo.
Yeah, I wanted to um, comment on a um, an an observation of councilmember Funks and then also. On councilmember Doris's comments. In terms of, you know, whether this helps or hurts, you know, the attraction of other, let's say, retail, you know, or. Other types of commercial projects, I don't really think that this will will do either. I mean, in other words, I don't think this is going to be a spur to getting exactly what else we want in the area, and I don't think it would be a discouragement of getting. Exactly what else we'd like to see in the area either. I just, um, I I don't. Think it's in in and of itself would impact that. I think denial, though. Would impact uh, in some way orderly development. Because we've had two planning commissions, you know, want to prove the old project at granted only a three to two vote. Um, which we found out is later is not a, not a good thing. Um, and a four to three vote this last time, basically completely different planning commission. You know, I almost, I maybe one, maybe two of the same commissioners. And that, you know, says to me two things. One is. Obviously, this is not a no brainer situation, as people who are adamantly for it or adamantly against it would like to think it is. It is not, you know, there's clearly a division of opinion on that. But I think to the comments that were made by Max Zappas. And and ironically, there were comments in our letters about, you know, we need more things like La Plaza. Uh, that's the kind of thing we need. Well, the very people who are developing La Plaza. Are very concerned about what we're saying about development. If we, you know, reject this project. And there's something, you know, I certainly do have a concern, certainly our prerogative, it was. It's, and I'm, and I'm perfectly uh. Glad that it came to council level, it was significant enough, had enough uh, controversy around it that it warranted a look by the council. But I would be concerned in terms of orderly development in that area and in our entire city. If we um, twice rejected uh, planning commission approvals of the project. And I would also comment in terms of the massing and stuff and how this looks to people coming out of La Paloma Court. You know, we also, we still need to think in terms of alternatives. If this ever were rezoned and turned into multifamily housing or something. You know, A, you'd have way more traffic, but B, you know, you'd you'd have taller mass. You know. It it, our our standard can't be. That we're going to put on this applicant or other applicants. Um, that what they do has to bring along the next good project that we really want. And it um, and it, it can't be, the neighbors don't like it, so we'll disapprove it. Because then there's the neighbors, if they're concerned about seventy seven cars and this with all of the landscape, including trees inside, which you'll never see, you've never seen in any other mini storage thing. You know, we're going to be back at this place again. Down the road of having the neighbors appeal to us to say no to whatever it is that gets proposed. So anyway, I I feel like Mark in the sense that I, I just can't say that it's that it's inconsistent with the uh. Immediate neighborhood or contrary to its orderly development.
Yeah, just one more thing on on that, because it is one of my notes that I have here is is what I'm hearing from, you know, from a lot of. A lot of the callers and letters and then so other, some other talk that we're having is. Is to wanting us to deny the project because something else better could could be built. That's not what we're here for. We can't, we can't, we're not here to choose what can get built there, as it was already said, city doesn't own the property. It's um, there, there are, we have rules that we have to follow, so we're not going to go, well, you know, I don't like this project. Think something better would go there, so we're going to deny it because of that reason. That's that's not how this works and. And then anyway, otherwise, that's that's why I I have to go in the direction that I'm going, so, you know, thank you.
Um, one last, one last thing, if I could, um, in regards to the wall, I mean, I was, I was kind of like Mark that originally I thought the. The block wall with landscaping was better, but I'm perfectly happy for it to be this way. But I just would comment is, when you drive by Dove Creek, the neighborhood along El Camino Real. What do you see? You see hun- hundreds and hundreds of linear unbroken wall. And if it didn't have the landscaping. Or maybe the housing, the roofs of the house, what looked like houses behind it, and happened to be houses. If you didn't see that, yeah, you you'd go, wow, that's what kind of a compound, you know, is that it has a compound look? If it weren't for the landscaping and and what you know to be houses behind it. So. I think that the idea that, you know, a lot of fence, whether it's see-through or wall. It doesn't necessarily create a compound, it depends on the uh, you know, what's in front of it and what's in back of it. So, anyway, thank you.
Councilmember Funk.
Yeah, I would, you know, to that point. Note that one of the comparisons that that we looked at last time is that 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 the residential walls are six foot walls, and that's what. What almost all of Dove Creek is with a couple of exceptions for grade differences. Uh, versus a, you know, ten foot wall that was proposed. Um, and then for the large, its largest, most prominent face, a ten foot wall on top of a nine foot retaining wall. So that that was, you know, that's a lot more than a than a six foot wall with houses and and people coming and going. And a sense of life in that community versus what will be um, largely. Uh, a dead space. I'm not hearing, uh, I I want to come back to um. Some of what um. Mr. Klaus said in his presentation of the PowerPoint. Cause noting that um. The other places where mini storage or um. Would contributed to um. Negative development. We have a community that has a lot, this end of town has a lot of multifamily. As as well as a single family. And there is sensitivity of about our loading this part of town with things that don't help it be. Um, a really wonderful thriving um, part of town, but that that degrade the quality of the neighborhood. And um, I'd. And and to another point there, you know, I, you know, I I talked at length with with Max, because I, you know, I'm very concerned about us not getting. You know, developers not, you know, being discouraged to do projects here. Um, you know, and we all take heat from people that, you know, don't want one thing or another. You know, in the course of making these decisions. I think that the, we also don't, we also don't want to be a city that anybody who come, who's been taking the seminars that Mr. Klaus mentioned and you just, just don't let anyone ever say no to you, just push it through. That we will not defend our community, that we will not defend our general plan, that we will not stay faithful to the ground rules that we have set forth in that plan for our community if somebody is just really pushy. You know, if, if somebody won't say no, that, that we won't depend. So that's not good for our community either. Not, you know, neither of those reputations is good and none of us wants to be here in this situation where this developer has invested what he's invested in this and is bringing a plan that is so difficult for the, the folks who live in the area to, to support. And where, you know, we've heard a lot of thoughtful arguments about that as well as some things that, that we can't, that aren't really, that we can't stand on. So I guess I have to say I can't make finding number four.
And Susan, you said well that this is not a position that any of us want to be in.
Yes.
Nobody jumped to be the first to speak. Because this is a, this is a challenging decision. So when it comes to number four, one, I can, I can squeeze finding number one in. Not, not perfectly, but I can well enough make that finding as well as the others. Number four, what I've heard a lot of folks say, and even just within our council conversation is that somehow because there are, there's a, you know, a poorly maintained liquor grocery store on the corner, that somehow that means we don't have to keep a higher standard or that we don't have to seek, so like, well, if we've got that, then what does it matter if we do the next thing and then the next thing? And I think we run that risk of being very hodgepodge. It's one thing to be eclectic, which we certainly are in a Tascadero, but hodgepodge is something entirely different, which to me speaks to that orderly development. And so, you know, you, you talked about, Councilmember Funk, you talked about reinforcing randomness. And I think that that is what this would do. It doesn't lend to the orderly development and I don't find that it is consistent with the character. You know, Councilmember Borbo, you talked about, I just see these, you know, block walls with Dove Creek, and yes, they've been softened with the landscape to the point where I barely see those. When I drive up and down in that area and a lot of them set back and you see the greenery, it's, it's really quite lovely. I don't think there's a lot of inconsistency in that area. You've got that liquor store that, it'd be nice if they, you know, spruced up a bit. But the churches, you know, of course, the park behind on Viejo Camino, the residential areas are actually quite nice looking and very sort of that rural feel to it. I'm concerned about the south facing side particularly as you're, as you're driving north and, and seeing that, that, that big section of building B and just the mass of it. It is hard to say that this, the use and everything that it would be consistent. I also get the argument that my, my colleagues have said that, you know, if this gets rezoned, because I know that the applicant has asked to be on that potential rezoning list when we look at our general plan. And if this got rezoned for multifamily, we could be looking at, you know, a large mass of building. Granted, it would be, you, then you'd have other problems, you'd have traffic issues, but you would also have probably not a mass, you'd have things much more broken up, much more architectural interest, and that would be much more consistent with the character of the neighborhood. I'm not saying that's what's coming, but that is something that we've talked about. So I still come to that place of not being able to make finding number four. So I would look to one of my colleagues to make a motion.
Let's see, I believe that is draft, can, can, could staff put up the two, two motions? And then we'll come back to language. I would move that we adopt draft resolution B overturning the planning commission's action and denying the Dove Creek mini storage project on the grounds that it is not, that, that it does not meet finding number four.
Second.
Yeah, just to be clear on that motion, I noticed in the, in the, in draft resolution B, the language is written that it's, all of the findings are negative. So I assume you, you're willing to adjust the, your language that you would address specifically item or finding four?
Yes, we should, well, we can go back into the, the particulars of the language. Do we need to have, do we need to have the specific language?
Let's, let's bring on our city clerk if we could.
Yeah.
Or if you could come on and let us know what the specific language is that you would need.
Um, sure. I think if you're only going to not deny it based on not being able to make one finding, then you can remove everything and just put that, that you're denying it based on that particular finding that it's not consistent with the neighborhood.
Okay.
And, and we can leave it at just, I think we changed it to a one, so just have the one finding, because to deny a project, you only need to not be able to make one finding, so that would be sufficient.
And so as to a drop draft resolution B, because finding number four is not made, that's sufficient language for you in this motion?
Yeah, I would, I think rather than saying finding number four, because then we'd have to go through and fix all of the language, because you have a bunch of them in the negative. And so if you're not making all of those, then we'd need to fix that. So I think you could just say, because you can't make whatever that fight, the for, the, the language of that finding, and we can, yeah, and say that we can't make this, so this is the, the finding we'll include in the language of the resolution.
Okay. So we're making, so the motion is for draft resolution B, because we cannot make the finding that the proposed project or use will not be inconsistent with the character of the immediate neighborhood or contrary to its orderly development. Okay, is that the motion that the maker is intending?
Yes, that is my intent.
And the second intent as well?
Yes.
And just to make sure, because it has to have a fact with it, so the fact that's listed is sufficient.
Could you read out that fact? I've got a pile, I've got piles of paper and plans, but I'm not looking at that, that piece of the.
Give me one second.
Report right now.
Pull it up unless either Kelly or Phil have it up, otherwise just give me two seconds.
They do have it up. So the fact is, the proposed mini storage use is grounded primarily by residential parkland, childcare facilities, churches and a seasonal creek. A mini storage project in use is incompatible with the surrounding neighborhood and is a departure from the established land use pattern. It is also contrary to the orderly development of the immediate neighborhood.
Yeah, I think that can work.
So, so my advice would be that when you say that would work, you're saying that that would be included within your motion?
Yes. It is acceptable to, to include the language that the city clerk just read within the text of the motion.
Actually, it was Kelly Gleason that just read.
Oh, sorry, that Kelly just read, thank you.
And is that acceptable to the second?
Yes.
And from our city attorney and our city clerk, is there anything further?
Not, not from me.
Okay. So we have a motion by Councilmember Funk, a second by Mayor Protim Newsom, roll call, please.
Councilmember Funk. Yes. Councilmember Borbo.
No.
Councilmember Darris.
No.
Mayor Protim Newsom.
Yes.
Mayor Moreno.
Yes, ma'am.
Motion passes.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here tonight and to my colleagues, of course, for going through this, this process and really taking the time to do the research and ask the questions and come to very thoughtful decisions. Even though we don't all agree on this, I can tell that each of us has put much thought and concern into this, not something we came into lightly. These are not the kind of decisions that we have to make every day and they're not easy and thank each and every one of you for being willing to do this. And I will say that Mrs. Ms. Romero, you did an excellent job in your presentation. I know the council members who met with you very much appreciated your time and, and you do your job well, so thank you for that and thank you for the way that you present and the respect that you show and you're very good at what you do. And with that, our city council will adjourn to its next regular session on June 22nd, 2021. Good night all.
Good night all.
Hi, everyone.
Good night.